Okay.
Good to go. Alright, I'm gonna call to order the committee the whole meeting at five thirty one. Uh first up, the good of the order. Any council members have anything for the good of the order? Do we, and by the way, just a quick check, do we have, um, is council member Supple online or do we have other council members online?
Not yet.
Okay, um, council member Supple had reached out, so let me just see your call where he is not feeling great, so he's gonna be virtual tonight, but he also had an issue with electrician coming, so anyways, I just wanna know if that carries over into the council meeting. That will need to check in on him if there's a vote or something like that. Um, but other than that, that's all I have. Okay, so move on, review of regular meeting agenda. Uh, are there any items like on consent or anything else that had concerns or reasons you might potentially want to vote, just to bring the heads up? Alright, I'm seeing or hearing any. So with that, we'll move on to our first discussion item, discussion and development of city legislative priorities with our city administrator here Cynthia Vann.
Hello, good evening, council, mayor, we don't staff. Uh, so at each of your, um, places, I put three different documents. Um, and we tried kind of below tech to make this simple, so. Um, now is the time of year where we need to develop our twenty twenty five city legislative agenda. Um, one, because, um, our partner agencies always ask that we produce a city legislative priorities, um, agenda, but also this year we have a lobbyist and we will be spending a fairly significant amount of time and resources up, um, uh, at Olympia as well as potentially Washington DC, so having that one page legislative agenda is gonna be really important this year. So what I've done is you have a couple things at your table side, one of which is the twenty twenty five AWC city legislative priorities. As the mayor mentioned at the last meeting, this was recently adopted, I think unanimously. Um, mayor, is that right?
That's correct.
Um, so one thing that we need to do in the next couple meetings is to decide whether or not we want to adopt by vote the AWC legislative priorities and incorporate them in as reference into our own, which is something that we've traditionally done. But the second thing is, is to prepare our own. So what I've done is there's a very basic form here. And what this form shows is, um, and I'm asking all council members to identify your top three infrastructure needs for the city. Your top three funding issues for Duval, as well as the top three policy issues that either are facing local government or specifically to Duval. Um, you can take a picture of it and send it to me, you can just email me, um, you don't need to use this form, I was trying to make it easy. Uh, just email me the contents of, um, what you would have put on the form, so any way you wanna give the information to me. Um, and then from there, what I'll do is consolidate everything that I get from council and then put it, make a draft of the Duval legislative priorities, get it all to you at the next meeting for you all to vote. Um, and then the third thing that I did is, you know, cities are developing theirs right now, so the ones that are publicly available are from twenty twenty four. But I did pull other cities legislative agendas, so, and I tried to do a range of, um, city, St. Husk, Spokane Valley, Smith Homage, um, Sumner, Mercer Islands, Black Diamond. Uh, I can't remember, also I figured Milk Creek and Harbor. Um, if you go to the back of the packet that I provided, I think both Harbor is a really nice example. Um, we would like to have our legislative priorities on a single page. It is far easier to hand out on the hill, whether it's city action days or meeting with legislators, and certainly in DC. Um, also, a lot of legislators are not accepting paper in the same way anymore, so we wanna make it really easy to open an email, see it, and then be able to interact with it. So, um, there's a lot of great content in some of the other cities legislative agendas. Our goal though is to have it on a single page similar to, um, how Harbor did it. Um, in terms of content, uh, certainly the ability to duplicate what is on AWC's legislative priority list, but what we're hoping for is this will be used a little different this year. Um, because we are going to be hyper focused on Duval issues with our lobbyists, is that we get really specific on what Duval needs in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six cycle. Um, so that's the activity, get it back to me by the twenty eighth, I can get it prepared around in about minutes.
Just wanted to follow up question between twenty four and twenty five, could we be approaching this or looking at this as things that can be accomplished within the twenty four, twenty five cycle? Or they could be parts of phased investments that begin in twenty four, twenty five and extend beyond that? Because obviously some of the needs that we have are, are beyond maybe what we can fund in a cheaper cycle or they're more involved in terms of from a housing perspective and.
So both, I think what we would like to do is immediate wins that we could potentially fund in twenty five, twenty six, but also finding long term funding for some of our larger priorities or long term financial stability, um, for the city through tax initiatives at the state or something like that.
Yeah, I think just historically, um, we've been talking about city hall infrastructure, um, on our legislative agenda for several quarters now, so. Now we're like, if we have things forthcoming that we're going to be asking for in the future, it's not hard to add some of those things where we have space to start the conversations now in lay the groundwork, um, for when we're ready to make the asks. So this year now that we're ready to make some asks on, um, infrastructure funding, our legislators are well versed in what we're going to be asking for, so it should help with their knowledge base and, um, also probably hopefully help with our ability to get support for some of these appropriations.
Uh, council member Goodfond?
Um, just for my knowledge here, um, should we need priority, has it been, and then online is based on, um, basically where we end up budget should have paused, and then how many you don't want any from you, so like, or we, you're gonna shortfalls for this, you thought it say we?
Yeah, so that's why I broke it out into three categories, 'cause some of them will overlap, but some are distinct. So the top three infrastructure needs, they all are going to need funding. I mean, we don't have the resources to frankly build any large project without either federal or state persistence. The top three funding issues though might look a little different, so whether that's, um, property tax, sales tax initiatives, um, tends to be a little more state legislative focused, but might be seeking more grants or. Um, so those probably overlap in some ways, but are distinctly different. And then the other are policy issues, so it could be, um, use our lobbyists to advocate at the state level to reduce a burka online use regulations, for instance. It's one of the things we talked about with our lobbyists is advocating at the state level to lower the rate of state mandates that are imposed on cities and unfunded mandates being imposed on cities. So that might be something that people would say is a policy issue you would like, that's a put on priority list this year.
Okay. Uh, one, oh, thank you.
Um, also just to note that, uh, the state budget is gonna be a bit tighter this year, so beyond appropriations, um, it's not probably in our best interest to ask the legislature to give us money for anything other than capital projects. Um, so for example, like public safety, one of the things that I have on my list is, um, making the public safety sales tax council matic versus voter approved and potentially raising that, um, sales tax amount as well. Um, it's something that every city and every county is struggling with, um, so there's likely to be support from other jurisdictions. So think of things like that, of like, what tools do we have in the blocks already that we can ask for changes to, to, uh, that fit our community, uh, that we can ask and try and advocate for. Um, we, you know, there will be plenty of capital money, there always is. Um, but when it comes to funding our government operations, we're probably not gonna have much. Um, as we know, some hot like grants aren't gonna come through this year, and so we're, um, thinking, you know, thinking of things in that context as well as, uh, I think it's really important for us to be looking at this with flexibility. Um, and having the tools we need to fit our communities, make sure that we have, uh, can build that resiliency into our budget and funding our, our operations.
My question doesn't really impact this exercise, but just out of curiosity, I, I know that some places do different, um, priority lists for state versus county and when they have a huge, little buddy, um, and traditionally we've just had, I mean, these are our priorities and then we use the same. Is that something that you've heard from our lobbyist or maybe you or the mayor have an opinion on? It's not official for us?
So we met with the lobbyist yesterday and my city administrator report, I'll go through that and, well, we can also just talk about now, 'cause it's relevant to this conversation. Um, so yesterday we met with the lobbyist, um, talked about our projects and then creating a list of other projects that we could either seek um, smaller grants or appropriations at the federal and state level, um, and also some of the policy issues. And then we gave them a tour of the city and showed them all the different infrastructure projects. Um, their comment on our maintenance yard, this is the second worst they've ever seen, so, um, uh, a huge need there. Um, they are going to, on individual projects, create material for us for legislative purpose. So for instance, I'm giving them all the documents for Third Avenue, I'm giving them all the documents for Big Rock, and they will create individual, um, persuasion pieces for us, is that just, for want of a better word, on those individual projects. Um, I don't know if that exactly answers your question.
Yeah, it's directed on it, but yeah, I get what you're saying. It's a little more project by project, so depending on what it is, basically, it might be aimed more toward one or the other.
Right, so for instance, Senator Murray, um, has a lot of, uh, influence on transportation projects. So meeting with Senator Murray's staff, you might bring the Third Avenue project in that particular issue paper to a meeting with Senator Murray's staff as opposed to, um, meeting with the state legislature that has more of a focus on public safety.
Right.
Um, so some of the areas of emphasis that they immediately came up with yesterday, um, were federal department justice grants on equipment for police departments. Um, they have a huge interest in trying to get federal funding for Third Avenue. Uh, the ball fields, they are a little bullish on, um, getting federal funding, 'cause ball fields tend to be a state local as opposed to a federal interest. Um, possibility for national endowment of the arts, um, uh, appropriation, so they have a lot of immediate thoughts. Um, but I think on some of those issues, they're gonna be preparing individual issue papers that are specific to what a project there is.
Thank you. Other questions, council member Appleton and then Shaker?
Yeah, your question reminded me, so for King County, if I'm thinking of that part, one of the issues that I think has been kind of, and it even goes into rows and things like that, is our city ends up providing services for the unappropriated areas. And so parks specifically, we're serving our parks and end up serving all the uncorrelated areas, we aren't collecting taxes from them. If we run levy, it only can come from our inside city limits taxpayers. And I think, uh, you maybe had brought up that some of these levies, unless you have a pool out there that everyone's excited about, aren't your paths to create like a park district?
Some metropolitan parks would be the.
I said you with the, I'm gonna call it park district, so just, um, that would be something I would wanna maybe levy, I, I mean, lobby to King County, and I don't know that that would necessarily belong on something like this, but I'll kind of go back to kind of orbit county.
So what I would say is, is that if there are other issues that don't need kind of this high level list of where you would go to DC to levy, put them still on the form somewhere so I can capture them, because we will be also doing some work at council member Perry's office and King County Council.
Okay, yeah, that would be more our county issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Council member Shaker?
Uh, my question was, uh, safety needs, uh, and what are they, you might put, for example, uh, really plain crosswalks, you know, about in the area, uh, as something is concerned, it's, so, basically since I've, I've moved here, uh, safety cameras, like our recent discussion, or another, another safety issues, uh, what, what, would that be under infrastructure or what do you think?
It could be under infrastructure, so if those kind of safety features are something you're interested in, I would put it there. Um, I listed three, you can put as many as you want. I mean, what I'm going to do after I get everybody's responses is kind of pull them. I'll list everything and then it'll be up to you all. Hopefully on the fifth, we would like to get this done before the nineteenth or have it voted, uh, you know, honor about the nineteenth, because we need to be prepared for the new legislative session. Um, our lobbyist is hoping to come and present to council in December. So having those legislative priorities largely developed will help in that conversation as well. But things like that could easily go under infrastructure and you can put in on a list, I mean. Um, if you look, I mean, like I said, some are very wordy, I mean, I put some homey first, Spokane Valley first. Um, I would say probably too many words, right? When you look at it quickly, it's a front, backside. But if you look at some of the smaller ones, you can get a lot of information under, um, you know, some of these different categories, and we can list quite a few things without being overly wordy or descriptive. Because the point of this is not to be super descriptive, it's to say quickly, these are the things that people in Duval are worried about.
And if I might add real quickly to, um, you know, legislators, I mean, you get fifteen minutes with them if you're lucky, um, because it's just so busy. And so the short and sweet and easier it is to understand and for them to officially take it in, the better off we are. Um, the details will come in the questions, and if they need more details, uh, on request, then if we have the issue papers to go with them, then we can provide those to their staff and their staff can track that. Um, but the legislators themselves really don't have time to even read a full one from chart like Spokane Valley. Um, so, um, they were, their staff helps out with that quite a bit. So, um, that's a, a real thing to keep in mind as well. Uh, and I think the other thing to remember is that you don't wanna have too many priorities. Um, there's a reason AWC has five primary priorities. You can have, we can have lots of other things that we're advocating for, um, but we want to keep a list short and sweet and to our most important items, and we can still advocate for, uh, things that are not on that primary list.
Council member Appleton, and maybe this was discussed prior, maybe I can, but do we have, and maybe what SVG is planning to, um, have on your legislative priorities?
No, before I came to the meeting tonight, I looked for SVG as well as some cities and they don't have theirs available yet, so. And we did not talk about, we didn't comment the last, uh, council member, was there, uh, council member, I don't remember having a robust conversation about legislative priorities at the SVG meeting.
Yeah, we've had an individual update, but they didn't provide it really in depth.
The question is, is it good to have ours repeat with that, if you're willing to go, or, right, and so it'd be nice to know what they are planning on?
I think from our lobbyist's perspective, what they're really looking for is very specific to Duval this year. Now, it's a little different than what we've done in the past, ours has been, well, we'll adopt AWCs or we'll adopt SVGs, 'cause we all care about the same issues. But twenty five particularly, this is going to be used in a very different way. Um, because we have this lobbyist and then they'll build issue papers from what is on our legislative priorities. I think that the focus is a little different, um, we can, so some of them, if you look, I can't remember which one, there's usually a, a little bullet at the end that says, and also we, you know, not gonna approve AWC, SVG, SCAs. So we can add that to ours, like we, you know, if council decides we wanna adopt by reference to other organizations legislative priorities. Which is why I included AWCs, that's something that I think probably council shows a quality to. Um, whether you wanna incorporate AWCs onto ours.
Uh, council member Shaker?
Uh, just gonna say, I really liked what Spokane Valley did with the pictures, pictures were very specific to their requests. Uh, as opposed to Black Diamond, as I was saying, generic, definitely Black Diamond thing. I, I like the, the picture, so for example, if one, you know, the one of our top priorities, which, you know, they like the top priority, is the, uh, when building all, uh, you know, main street intersection, uh, it'd probably be great to have an aerial view of that to help them understand, hey, this doesn't accommodate big trucks. Uh, you know, we need to widen somehow, you know, that, that.
Yeah, and we can do that, I mean, we can certainly, um, pop it through it up and take a picture.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Having it during a new drug operation.
Yeah, I think that'd be well as well.
Go ahead, man, I mean, um, council member Shaker, product transportation, so I just also wanna note that, um, there's not likely to be a transportation package this year, and because of the difference cost of construction projects from the previous that have been approved by the legislature and sustained by voters, um, they're trying, going to be trying to figure out how to fund projects that have already been, been, uh, allocated, uh, because of increased costs. So, um, I think that's something to keep in mind, also on the legislation side, is that, um, it's not likely that we're gonna get stuff as a direct appropriation from the legislature for transportation. Uh, it's possible, I think, on a, uh, a couple of items from the federal level, but I don't believe it wouldn't be Duval in our, in our, which may be a candidate for the federal, so.
Would, would that, yeah, put it as a follow up question, so it might be better to save my priorities for other things, is that your suggestion?
I think that, um, you know, Third Avenue, like, we know that Third Avenue was a huge issue, uh, and that we need that.
And sorry, yeah.
We need that as a bypass, um, especially for emergency and first responders. That probably, and because we have gotten grants from that already, that is probably an area that we should focus on as far as appropriations. Um, and then, um, likely, you know, city hall and maintenance yard, um, would be the, would be three ideal ones uh, that are likely to gain traction. Um, and also, when building volume two, three doesn't have any design, um, so you need to be shovel ready uh, when you're asking for money, and so not being shovel ready, um, already kind of puts that on the map harder and at the lowest level, if even eligible.
Good.
Counter, oh, a response, yeah.
Yeah, I would add that they were pretty excited about Third Avenue because they're ninety percent design and you can show Third Avenue, especially the cross section that shows pedestrians walking in. Um, it's an exciting project that people can immediately visualize, and if you invited, um, a legislator out here to walk, they could look at the plan, walk Third Avenue, see the cover and say, oh, I get it. Um, so they're excited about projects that have, um, some initiation because they're easy work to visualize. And they're very excited about Big Rock, but again, that's more of a, uh, state local funding than, um, than something like Third Avenue. They're, they're very excited about trying to find funding for Third Avenue, they, they're feeling pretty good about that one.
Council member Isaacson?
So, I don't know, anyone else? Pretty overwhelming. Um, so, I mean, I just, coming up, my idea is I think Duval's priorities, some of ours, my own priorities, and the conversations are highlighting, I think, is there a way that we can get some kind of sense of where the mayor is, where the city staff, where, where you think the priorities are with the candidates that we're talking about here, 'cause I think for us to waste our time with ideas, and I know we're gonna come back and vote on it, but Third Avenue is a great example, right? Can, you already know that there's some, some traction there, so why would we maybe all say the intersection, moving to the wall road, and you come back and say, that's probably a waste, 'cause there's a lot of transportation support here. Can you give us some type of guidance on where to focus, where you think we're most successful? Because we give you a whole bunch of answers that are not, you believe in your experiences and meetings you've been in, they're a waste of time, I mean, we're kind of actually drawing a board.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say, um, there is value in gathering all of the feedback, because there may be things, um, we don't know, you know, we, there's four things we do know, we know that Third Avenue is a high priority project, maintenance yard, city hall. Um, there's going to be traction on those, it might take a few years, but there will be traction. Um, things, other items that may not be ready to go, those are basically put on a list for years and come trashed up. And then you also have the side of policy where something you, especially in a long session, you may have policy come up that was talked up that may not have been on our priority list, um, but the council has brought forward. It suddenly comes up in the middle of session, you have an opportunity to advocate and move it forward or block. Um, and so I think that there is value in throwing everything in the kitchen sink out to begin with, um, because that can also help inform the future discussions as well. Um, and since this is the first year we have a lobbyist, I think that that'll also be helpful for them to hear where council's coming from and also provide them with some baseline on, um, how to educate council and how to work with council on some of the items that are, that people have ideas or have a board with.
Did you ever listen to her?
Um, yeah, so we will have the lobbyists come in December, so part of it would be, um, for items that aren't on an immediate list, having council be able to, uh, inform them on some, some items that we may not be shovel ready, but we would like to see some at least application on. Um, the other thing is, even though we know which ones are largely shovel ready, because we're in pre-design for them, uh, city staff, we talked about it today, is also coming up with a list of other projects. They would like a list of ten that range from fifty thousand dollars all the way up to, you know, ten million dollar projects, because in order to be effective, you want to pair sometimes a very large ask with a very small ask, in small proportion of different cities. Um, because some legislators wanna say yes, but they can't say yes to the big thing. So we're trying to come up with a list of ten things that are kind of baked. They don't have to be fully baked, meaning they don't have to be a ninety percent design on them, but they're, um, good ideas that cover a gamut of interests that they can be ready to talk to legislators immediately on. So, um, staff is coming up with their list, but you may all have really great ideas that are not, you know, ten million dollar projects, but are worthy of having on the list for appropriation.
Council member Appleton?
Yeah, this, um, I was wondering, you just said, and council member Shaker, that when building all, we're not shovel ready, but we've been asking for many years to do some kind of study or a study, maybe we should, you know, make it narrow it down and maybe do a study of that intersection options, things like that, it's about to be a, a win if New York legislators allow it. Maybe that would be, in the, our, in the near, you know, it'd be a big capital app, but in the meantime, it'd be more smaller. I mean, is that, maybe then when building all into, okay.
Yeah, that's a perfect example of, we've been asking and asking and asking for infrastructure, but could you at least start us off with a study? Because that's how Third Avenue started, that's how the ball field started, is an idea that blossomed into something.
Okay. Okay, other questions, comments?
So the ask is that we, uh, do the sheet or some, something like that.
Something like that, me, I mean, I'm trying to make a visual, like, it can be easy to just, to identify what I'm asking for, which is for funding needs and policy issues, 'cause our legislative agenda should cover all of it.
And by honor before the twenty eighth of this month, so.
Yes, close, yeah. Alright, so I think that's it for that item, so let's move on to, um, budget presentation by department. So I'll hand this over to our city administrator again to get started.
Uh, thank you, so I will not be presenting, but, uh, following up from last week's, some great presentations from departments. And so, uh, luck of the draw, and we'll see which department is coming up first.
That would.
None was like to go first.
So we will start with, um, uh.
The camera chose chief.
Community events and, uh, and, uh, cultural commission.
One second.
Okay, so, good evening, council, mayor, thanks for having me, you're very, I'll be presenting the community events and services budget overview. And then at the end, I also have a slide from the cultural commission budget, so press left.
You'll need to press on, uh, on, and then you can press the, there you go.
So the role of the community events and services budget, so we manage citywide social events, which we have about ten, so Summer Stage has six concerts, the tree lighting, we added moving like the farms here. Ten, so summer stage has six concerts, the tree lighting, we added moving like the farms here, Pride in the Park, and then we also have. Um, the D-Val Express coming up, which is a new event. We also manage special event permits, consulting, season nonprofits, relationship building with community partners. Also manage some social media website, community engagement, sponsorship. Grants, so that's, um, working with the Fort of Seattle grants, also working with, um, the economic development and tourism grant, that's fun. And also working with volunteers, engaging community members and outside. From organizations to help volunteer at some garments, excellent. So some accomplishments we have for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, you can see there with the numbers for summer stage around twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. The D-Val Days Festival, I did not have numbers for, but I think it's somewhere in the like over five hundred at least, you know. I think they, I think they estimated like three thousand, four thousand attendees. Um, like the D-Val was great, we, um, had. A great attendance in twenty twenty-three, around eight hundred people showed up. The launch of the cultural commission is something that I'm really excited about, they've been doing some great work, working with Cynthia with that commission, so that's been a lot of fun. Pride in the Park was a new event that was really fun to work on, on, like, see, special event permits, some numbers there. Some new programming that we added was the Star Mazing event that's at Big Rock, I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to check that out, but it's it's pretty fun. That's a free community event that is provided. Um, Sky House runs some recreational camps, they run some sports camps. Not a lot of people signed up for those camps, but it is a new program and helping to get the word out, will just increase that, um, participation number. We, um, got two, uh, we got a brand for the Fort of Seattle, we're doing two special events with that, like I said, the movie at the farm, which we had about a hundred and fifty people come here for that event. And about maybe sixty or so people stayed for the actual movie, um, we were able to partner with Holy Innocence Church. To use their parking lot, since there's not a big parking lot over at Door to Farmhouse. And also worked with the Historical Society, and they offered some of the four movie activities, which was Taste of History, so they did, um. Apple cider, apple pressing, they made butter, they spun cotton candy, they had people dress up in pioneer wear, so it was. See the community show up for that new event, and then, of course, economic development and tourism grants, we issued five grants for that. Actually, I think it was six, counting the music crawl. And then I have the privilege to attend the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy this year, which was really fun, um, so completed that program. Next slide. So the goals for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, you can see there. Um, we have some really fun goals, we, so we did the movie in the park, our movie in the farm, and would love to do more movies in the park. It's just a really fun, easy event to get to the community, to offer activities before the events, and then just show up on movies, so. That's something that I'm looking forward to, creating a summer events guide, it looks like in previous years, there was a guide that was, I'm not sure if it's mailed now or how it was distributed throughout the city. But it just showcased events in D-Val and around the valley, so it had. Um, the information for D-Val Days, it had the summer, um, summer stage concerts. Uh, classes at Northwest Art Centers doing, so it just allowed helpful information all in one space for people to kind of reference, kind of like a recreation guide. You could say that city's usually put out. Um, and let's see what else, some other things. Increased recreational opportunities, so, yeah, those are just some goals that I have for next two years. Next slide. So new things for twenty-five, twenty-six, I'm not sure if you all are aware, but next year is the twenty-fifth anniversary of Summer Stage, so we were hoping. Um, we added some extra funds in the budget for the anniversary celebration, uh, looking for bigger musical acts, um, it would. Be more use of production, so a production team to come and do the sound. Um, yeah, so just being able to get bigger acts, I know her, I think it's Heart by Heart. They are a very popular act, but they're also very expensive. So we would like to really do an update for our twentieth anniversary, that's what we added that for, and then for our twenty twenty-six, going back to our normal lineup and. On the cost, so, and then we also added money for, uh, impromptu events. So impromptu events with, this year we did our forces day, Pride in the Park was an event that wasn't planned for, so just being, giving us the flexibility. To add these kinds of events as they come up as council sees fit and things that the community is interested in, so just giving us a little bit more wiggle room with that. We also included funding for the supportive way of D-Val and, um, for D-Val Days, I'm not sure. Let's see, for D-Val Days, we paid for the fort parties and for the barricades, which is pretty, it's a pretty expensive. Um, thing that we offer for that, and then increased advertising for special events and then for the summer event guide, so. One of the goals was, uh, economic development, and part of that is increasing our advertising, reaching outside of D-Val to bring people into the city to come and enjoy. You know, all that D-Val has to offer, Main Street's a really fun place to hang out when you have events all summer, like. The Music Crawl, the March of the Vegetables stuff happening, so just really getting the word out on all the great things that are happening in our community, so. Excellent. Like I said, I also have the pleasure of presenting you the cultural commission budget and overview, again, of that one. See, so there's just our list of accomplishments for twenty-three, twenty-four. They did some really great work this year, um. The Bridge Trolls is one of my favorites, the refresh of the trolls just is is really fun. If you're driving in the town. Um, they also approved the mural for the Welcome to D-Val mural, which is on First in Virginia. So the artist is currently working up some, is working on the mural with some suggestions from the cultural commission. And they also have their biannual art plan, that was a big lift for them to get done, and. Some of the goals for twenty-five, twenty-six would be complete the biannual, biannual art plan projects. Um, working on a creative district partnership with King County. Um, looking for grants to complete more programming, uh, supporting local artists. We do have some local artists that are currently working on the Cedar Springs, and then more community engagement, so. That's it for me, any questions?
Pulse her up with one, if that's okay, I didn't see it in their hands yet, um. So regardless of where where we lived on firework stuff, I was curious, I didn't see that in their, um. A move toward budgeting for a Fourth of July celebration, like at the former park, including a professional display, is that something that's just not in there right now? Or is it, is there like, uh, is that any impromptu, it seems a little bigger than that, so.
Um, it would fall into an impromptu event, um, though certainly because we're still in preliminary budget. Um, there's time to add that, and to, uh, council member Isaacson's point, um, from last meeting. We can, you know, as quickly as this is published, so the the budget needs to be published at the end of the year by December thirty-one and sent to the state. Um, you know, beginning in January, something comes up and council decides, hey, we would like to take a little money for this. You know, um, Director McMenon and I can work on doing a budget of, you know, as quickly as January, so. We haven't anticipated that as city staff, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't have it.
Other questions, comments for, uh, councilmember Isaacson and then Shaker?
Are we gonna see numbers for this? Where are the numbers for the, the what, so I saw one, weren't you, no, it's it?
So these are high-level budget presentations by department, but they're all in the preliminary budget documents that are, um, part of. Uh, Director McMenon's presentation.
Uh, councilmember Shaker?
Yeah, I just wanted to state how impressive, uh, the accomplishments, uh, were for the events, uh, this year. And, uh, I think all of us, or most of us saw this firsthand, uh, by by attending those events. And also just to, you know, kind of reinforce in their minds how important this is to D-Val for many reasons. Uh, one of those reasons is, uh, the people who live here in D-Val, the people we represent. These serve many needs, uh, for for people here and, uh, contribute great deals, make D-Val a great place to, uh, to live. And secondly, from an economic development point of view, uh, they bring business into our, uh. Uh, local businesses, our downtown, our restaurants, they create awareness of, uh. Of people, of what's, you know, what's here, both both local people and out of town people. And have long-term effects for, uh, for those reasons, so, and. We hopefully will continue to support these, uh, these types of events, uh, and the, uh, cultural commission, uh, as well.
Councilwoman Mercer?
So sort of a, uh, comment and then, uh, sort of a question, just to echo, you know, the appreciation for the work that's been put in this year, I know it was. I'm saying a blank slide, but in terms of really adding some great work, uh, structure, the execution, I think it's gone off. Well, and there's been a lot of feedback from the community, sort of reflecting that, so again, thank you for the work that you put into this. The one question I did have, and it's, it may just be. True point, since you have sort of a whole, you know, the budget, sort of the impromptu, but I know one of the things the cultural commission was looking at was sort of image for the city art. And there were some, a lot of that is actually a time investment, both staff, but also the volunteers of the cultural commission, I know there is some. Possibly where the, you know, how we documented that, the record keeping, if there's in in fact, you know, whether it is a QR code or a scam. Or, but we thought of, and then they discussed some different potential projects around, you know, self-care tours or some audio, those types of things. Typically don't have a lot of expense, but there is some expense. Is that anywhere in here, any of that sort of future project, but, or is it sort of the broader funding?
Um, so, yeah, one thing, and I probably should have added that, if you go into the budget for the cultural commission. There are two things that are added, one of which is the new projects that are identified in the biennial art plan. The second, though, is that there has been money put into the budget for maintenance, because that's one of the requirements of the biennial art plan, is that we maintain what we have. And so as part of that maintenance budget, and I think I put in ten thousand dollars for it. It would include any costs associated with the inventory, which is on the goal list.
Any questions, councilwoman Appleton?
Yeah, I mean, echo the same thing, it was a very fun year, a lot of opportunities for our community to attend, but we didn't get involved. Uh, one thing we talked about, kind of. Uh, is how community events is really tied with economic development, and and one thing they wanted to. I I think it was shared, do with this position is really create a way to partner and launch new events and then sort of. Kind of hand them to other organizations that are interested, and so when I look at some of the events, I'm not really sure if, um. You know, they were accomplishments that we did, or we say, hey, we helped launch this, and someone else wants to pick it up. Um, so I don't know if we would get funding again for the movie in the farmhouse, that was a really fun event, I see a lot of potential, is that something that we have a partner that would wanna take that? On into future years, and then our staff would work in support to kind of help coordinate any city resources to assist in that event, but not necessarily. Be, you know, leading the entire event, so I I don't know if that is still kind of the mindset that we have. Um, and then, so I don't know if the movie at the Door to Farmhouse and the train event is something that we are. Um, budgeting as an ongoing event, no, not unless we got funding, and then Pride in the Park was really a launch of an artwork. Is that something that another organization wants to do in the future? And then, or is that something that we are proposing as an event that we would?
Okay, so I'll try to remember the question, so we're backwards, um, Pride in the Park is not an event that we are going to maintain at the request of, um, the partners. They really want to own that event, it was, I think, a very well-received event, um, and I think. Just kudos to the city staff, I think we did a tremendous job, and we got a lot of positive feedback. And our after assessment, which Rita and I tried to do with any new event. That particularly ones that are partnered with community partners, as we do an after assessment, how to go, what are the. Good things that came with it, what are the things that are two betters, um, our partners for that ask that they take on the event and that we support them and. You know, we wanna hear, we want to follow the lead of those who, um. Have, I think, you know, a very very large stake in a event like that, so that's not one we're maintaining. We did, though, put in money for impromptu, sorry, I forgot my water, um, impromptu events or things like that. So whether, um, you know, for instance, it could be D-Valley, we could get a request, um, from, you know, community department or something like D-Valley. For the first year, we might do it, and then say, okay, yes, city partner review, like, I won't continue this. Um, movies at the park, we are actually going to seek a grant. The cost for movies at the park or movies at the farm is really equipment, right? We are gonna seek a grant for the city to have a, our own movie screen and audio equipment. So we probably wouldn't do that unless we got grant funding for it. Um, but if we own the equipment, it's actually fairly easy for us, particularly the community events coordinator, to launch that event. And with partnership with the D-Val Historical Society and Holy Innocence, we could probably do that fairly cheaply. But we wouldn't necessarily do that event without some grant funding on infrastructure, um. Licensing the movies like five hundred dollars, so there's a little bit of cost associated with it. Um, so I think with each new event, we would start them by having grant funding. We are not anticipating any big new event that's solely funded by, with city money, without a partnership from somebody else. Other than kind of the impromptu small things like Armed Services Day, where we buy ice cream, something smaller. Um, and then the other thing that we're doing on our bigger event is looking at ways to increase sponsorship, so we're working on a new sponsorship guide. As well as, um, Clerk Botero and our city attorney are working. Um, the three of us are working on creating a more streamlined policy for the meeting. So some folks will go to cities, um, like Summer Stage and see, can we put our code and say, oh, I'll give five dollars to make sure this event continues, but we don't really have the structure for that yet. And so that's one of the things we're gonna do in twenty twenty-five, it's better with you to give back to events that they wanna see sustained.
Do you have a follow up?
I have another question, but I'll wait.
I don't see any other, so go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure exactly where this would belong, but for some reason, Facebook has an algorithm that it thinks I wanna do volunteer activities related to. Sustainability and invasive species, or, because obviously I've talked about it, so it must know. Um, so I I see a lot of these activities happening in other cities, um, where they organize volunteers and then potentially partner with, not so, so, or maybe like OXO, things like that. And so I I know sometimes it's, you know, where would that belong of a partnership? Who would lead it, but is that something that we would consider? You know, organizing a community, it would be a community event to invite one of those organizations to partner with us on, you know, maybe. Enhancing an area in the corporate park, um. Something like that, and I don't, I don't know if I wanted to ask for that in the budget. Where did I put it, I brought it up, we were talking about public works, and I'm just trying to figure out, is there a place that it could belong to where we could. Proactively say, we are going to budget either people time or funds or something to get a project like that done.
Yeah, I think we talked about that, um, a couple, probably. Four or five council meetings ago, is how do you, how does council get the things you all wanna see happen into city staff or plans? My response at the time was, is it in the budget?
Right, exactly.
And so, if it's in the budget, I mean, part of my job is to make sure things in the budget happen. So if you all have things that you wanna see happen in the city, make a budget and request for it. There's things like that are not terribly difficult to do. But we would wanna make sure that we're budgeting staff time, if we need to have shuttles, we need to tell our insurer. So there are administrative costs associated with it that aren't prohibitive, but we would wanna make sure it's in the budget.
Okay. But then I went.
Uh, yeah, if it's in the budget, then basically, it's kind of.
Councilwoman Risher?
Yeah, it was sort of just a follow-up, I was trying to follow it, sort of trying. And those are obviously can be discrete line items, they can be under a particular department, I know that you did sort of for impromptu events from a community development, is there a way to do? You know, I don't wanna allocate funds that aren't gonna be used, because that puts stress, you know, without a plan behind it, but is there also a way to? And and for that, you know, I'm trying to think of a comparable sort of impromptu. Volunteer or something, you know, with master gardeners or whatever kind of you're trying to, where there would be. We don't have all the details for the specific ask. And and so that was my clarification, how specific do those asks need to be, or can be fairly generic around sort of the type of activity, but not the specific activity?
Um, so.
Sense?
I would say yes, and so we, again, city staff with the mayor's support, putting money for impromptu events. Based on the things that come to us. But there could certainly would be a subsection of council-identified community events that you would like us to work on, that we could. Um, you know, appropriate money for, I mean, we would like to get a sense of what they are.
Right.
And when we want them done, but, yeah.
Obviously, the ultimately, the the details required to fill the next year. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Isaacson?
Um, we'll, we'll, so the impromptu line you have with these conversations online. That we were like, let's add money to the impromptu, specific to these items. Gives us flexibility to do that, but obviously, if we didn't have enough heads up to do it, is there, do we need to? Gives us flexibility to do that. Obviously, if we give enough heads up to do it, is there, do we need to specify impromptu, this will be for gardening, this will be for music? Or can we, if we want more money in there for things that we think are talent-like? Can we just adjust that budget? A larger number, that would be made enough to where we can really truly be impromptu with the ideas.
Yes. So, um, yes. With the caveat that city staff have enough notice that we can do the event, right?
Oh, yeah.
Um, uh, so you know, if there's twenty thousand dollars in it and I'm trying to think of something, um, well, I. Put a pin in another thought. Um, if there's twenty thousand dollars and you want to do, um. I don't know, an art, I don't know where they are with it. Um, I can't really think of anything off the top of my head. Uh, Flag Day, if you wanted to do something for Flag Day, um, just, you know, we would want to get a sense of, you know, what are your goals? What are you hoping to accomplish? Um, what does success look like with, and with enough time to do it? I mean. Um, Rita and I were just joking that, uh, it kind of has felt this year the year of yes. So, you know, Rita and I meet every weekend. Okay, well, why don't we do a train event? What if we do movies? And somehow we've gotten to yes a lot without using a ton of city money to do it. So it's been really exciting. I mean. There isn't much, I think, with enough planning, we can really figure out that.
Councilor, go ahead.
Yeah, I know we're conscious at times, but just this one, but if all, I know with the adjustments we made around sort of communication role in terms of. And, and sort of focusing on my coordination. There was a line item in terms of expanding sort of outreach to, to beyond the community. Does that also just include, I think the other piece of that is, is there's the sort of proactive communication about. The attendance at the events or getting people to come in. I know there was also some feedback from the community, but lots of folks didn't understand. Or didn't, didn't have the backstory behind the hanging baskets, you know, in terms of that post-event communication file. Is that sort of incorporated? Not to define it, but is that something we could sort of anticipate being part of, part of that?
Um, yeah, if you don't have.
Well, so I'll have Rita answer a piece of it, but I also included in the budget some, uh, money for communications consultant thinking about these press releases.
Yeah, and I think for me, for events and just community wise, it's really important for us to help tell our story. And that's a part of it, right? Like you see the baskets and telling the backstory about how the baskets came to be. So just us being really proactive on our storytelling. Telling the work that the staffers is doing, the work that the councils work on and getting the work. Not trying to play catch up, so really being proactive on that kind of stuff. Um. Using, you know, Facebook, Instagram, just really utilizing the tools that we have. Our website. So, yeah, I, I'd love to be able to do more of that.
Yeah, that's great because I think it's both the, you know, organized events, but I think those are also like creating spaces or making a more inviting downtown, which. It sort of, you know, gives over the whole summer, whether you're having ice cream or things of that sort. And it's nice to be able to touch those successfully. Thank you.
And, and I'm sure to see a little bit of that in the clerk's presentation about how this shift in some of our resources and some of our budget proposals will. Um, hopefully, even though we're losing a communications coordinator, make a little room for, um, uh, more working communications.
Should we move on to the next one?
All right.
I'm going to take care of this. I'll have a little bit of a voice.
Oh, sorry.
We are having chili.
Yeah.
All right, um.
Sorry, not yet. Almost there.
I'll start my, I can pause. Um, good evening, uh, mayor, council, um, fellow Duval employees. Um, we're going to talk a little bit about where we're at in the police department. Um, budget I think is really tight. Um, but through this presentation, I think you're going to see that, um, law enforcement, no matter where you're at, whether you're. The Duval Police Department, um, King County Sheriff. Uh, we all have some similar things in mind regarding our role. Are you ready? Yeah, next one. So let's talk about, uh, the role of Duval Police Department. Truly, these things right here are what is essential of any law enforcement agency. Uh, we have some. Other requirements, um, that we don't deal with here. Uh, we don't, um, deal with holding corrections and prisoner intake and most types of things, but. Truly, the things that a Duval Police Department does is very similar to what Redmond does, what, uh, King County State Patrol does. Uh, enforcing the laws is one of the primary roles of law enforcement as well as preventing crime. Uh, responding to emergencies. Our city is a little over two and a half square miles. Uh, our response is pretty easy to, to handle, but we have to make sure we can respond appropriately for whatever situation is there. We do a very good job of enforcing law, preventing crime, responding to emergencies, uh, with the. Equipment and the staffing that we have. Uh, but we also provide some support services for the community of, if somebody, uh, needs some assistance, whether it's, uh, somebody that's unhoused in the community or whether it's. Somebody who just needs some additional help that they don't know where to go. We're here twenty-four hours a day. And so often we get that call in the middle of the night to take on some of those tasks. Investigating crimes, uh, we have a number of resources and we'll cover that as we go through the presentation. But, um, just enforcing the law is just the beginning of the tip of the spear, right? You have to investigate the incident to make sure it fits someone's criteria, make sure you have probable cause, make sure it's something that. Is appropriate, uh, that falls in that category of being a crime, because we did get called on a number of situations throughout the, um, day that. Um, are either civil in nature or don't fit that category. A lot of it is informational knowledge that. Somebody wants to know, can I do this? Can I do that? Are there, um. What can I do within the city limits regarding posting signs or those type of things? We still have to answer that as we go through that process. Uh, but, uh, investigating those crimes is highly important and. Uh, once we investigate, we have to prepare that case for legal proceedings that has to be filed with the court. And there are some very strict guidelines that the King County Prosecutor's Office as well as the city prosecutors. Use for the filing of cases and. What used to be a simple DUI arrest a number of years ago, where you could handle and get that taken care of within. Um, an hour, hour and a half now takes three, four hours differently, uh, because of the requirements for law. And, uh, so it does find that our ability to meet some of those needs. Such as, uh, being reactive to and patrolling the city can be impacted by the new processes that the court has. Um, to make them sure that the case meets their criteria, making sure that it has all the information needed to file. So there's a lot of work that goes into that. I didn't include a slide regarding accomplishments. Um, but I can tell you that, um, the major accomplishment that has happened since I've been here this last year. Has been to stabilize the agency. When I got here, it was on the edge of probably being no longer functioning. Um, and what I mean by that is there are a lot of things in place. Um, or should I say not in place to allow the agency to function. Um, the majority of the personnel were questioning whether this was the agency where they wanted to be. Uh, number of the personnel have left since then and we're already short of personnel. We presently have about forty percent, uh, deployable personnel in our department because of. Training needs. We have two individuals that are in field training that have approximately about six to eight more weeks to go. Uh, we have one person in the academy, doesn't graduate from the academy till the end of December. And then that person will start direct to you, which is about twelve to fourteen weeks. Um, and we have a number of people present in the background to get them hired on board. And we had one officer just leave, um, last night was his last night. Went to work for State Patrol and there's a number of reasons for that, but. Uh, truly, I think he's hoping to end up, uh, going to Eastern Washington where his family is. Wants to be close to his family, uh, as they go through that process. But I think that we've had people leave not because of, um. Because of that age or, um, that desire to make sure that their age and their family are protected, but mostly because of the culture. Um, and it is not unusual for an agency of our size to, um. Have new officers leave. Probably about the three-year. Um, just because by then they feel comfortable in what they're doing here and they're looking for different, um, experiences down the road. Um, I think if you talk to a number of chiefs in an agency or size, if they get three years out of somebody, um, they're good and great. Um, and it's our role, my roles, the chief and the sergeant, some lieutenant. As well as the rest of members of the agency to get them to. Um, feel like they bring value to the agency, but also to, uh, kind of get them to stay longer. Um, and I think that some of the people that we've hired lately. Fits in that category. They come to Duval because it is Duval. Um, that is kind of the biggest hook that they have for coming into our agency is we get them out, give them a ride along, they get to see what Duval has. And, uh, they understand there's a connection with the community that law enforcement has to have here and that's the reason why they come here. Um, we've upgraded our background process to kind of catch some of that as we go through that, I don't know, process here. Um, mentoring didn't occur within our agency. Um, and that went from the chief on down. Um, and we've implemented a few mentoring programs to kind of mentor our supervisors, get them some additional training, but also to have them mentor the new people that come on board. Uh, I think that one of the things that really hurt us in the long run was the fact that we had people that, um, came in and were just kind of said. Before and do good things, but never really had a lot of contact or no mentoring in that process. Um, I think you saw the presentation by Public Works where they talk about staffing is important, staffing is critical for the agency. Uh, maintaining personnel and having consistent people that, uh, travel through the agency is, is highly important. If you're always, uh, bringing in new people. Uh, one is not financially, uh, appropriate to be doing that, but also. It is something that you can't progress as a agency to develop. It's very difficult. You're always trying to train new people, bring them on board. Um, and so, uh, the big issue we focused on accomplishing this year is stability. Next. So as you see, this starts down, it's a little difficult to read over there, but, um. I have two people highlighted in red and those people really are individuals that work on residency, um. They're commissioned or limited commission, uh, but the school resource officer is funded by a levy, uh, position. Um, and, uh, if the levy, which will expire in two thousand twenty-five isn't renewed. Or there's an additional funding for that, that position will go away. Uh, if, uh, we have reserve officer that still works for our agency that does do some of the, um, after-hours events, uh, for us because we can't staff. Uh, but also that person is sometimes here during the daytime when we're short to be that second officer that we need on the street. Uh, whether that reserve stays with us in the long term, um, I know he desires to be here, but, um, there are a lot more requirements regarding training. That, um, fall into the category of a reserve police officer. They have to meet the exact same standard of training that. Our, uh, fully commissioned officers have to do. So that can be a little difficult at times, but, um. It's been very important for that person to be here. Um, he also is a pretty good point of contact for, um, the explorers or what they call cadets now on Redmond. And, uh, there are pretty strong resources for us when we have Duval days or other events that have going on. The staffing regarding, uh, FTEs for commissioned officers has essentially not changed probably since two thousand and sixteen. We still have the same number of commissioned officers at our department. Um, but our, um, calls for service are approximately probably about eighty to ninety percent higher than they were in two thousand and sixteen, almost up. Um, and it's not necessarily that we go from call to call. But as I talked about earlier, it's the complexity of the investigations that take more time. Uh, a well-functioning police agency should have about fifty, fifty percent of, um, responding to calls. And undirected patrol. Uh, we're not close to that right now, um, because of that. And. If you, there's different ways to look at how you staff an agency. Uh, truly looking at that undirected patrol time is, uh, ideal to have. But if you talk about, um, officer per thousand, we're probably about one point two eight to one point three officer per thousand. And agencies in our area are probably about one point six, especially agencies our size, about one point six to one point seven per thousand. Um, the national average is two point two per thousand. Uh, we don't need to be at the national average, but I do believe that we need to probably look at some of those things down the road. I know that. That costs money. Um, but it's something that, um, to be considered when you start talking about where we go as a police agency in the future. Uh, next please. Um, we are part of a number of regional statewide and national connections, uh, to help us through the agency. Our agency is very. Strongly, um, dependent on contracts for some of those reasons. Uh, we don't have our own court. We don't have our own jail. Um, we need some additional staffing. We have to have, um, personnel to come in and help us in certain situations. So. The first one on that list is the coalition of small police agencies. It is about, um, twelve agencies. We're one of the twelve. Um, then our small agencies such as McQuarrie, uh, Marbury Park. Uh, Issaquas, part of that agency, um, Mercer Island, uh, Pacific. Uh, a number of those other small agencies. And, and part of that coalition, small police agencies allows us to pull some of the resources together. Um, early in our presentation, I think you asked about, um, detectives for agency. And one of the things that we utilize with the coalition, small police agencies is if we have one of those investigations that requires that expertise. Uh, we have some, uh, federal and state funding that allows for detectives to pool. Some of those resources and you may see somebody here for a major investigation that may be from, um. Black Forest Park, uh, to help us out. They don't necessarily take on the entire investigation, but they're that added resource that we utilize. Uh, that coalition also allows us to pull some of our training to make sure that, um. We don't all have to have the same instructors. We kind of pull that instructor pool and we allow for some of those things to take place. Eastside Police Chiefs Association is, uh, all, as you can imagine, it's all the east side chiefs in, uh, King County. Um, actively involved in that process where, um, we deal with a number of. Um, agencies on the east side that kind of deal with things that are unique. It's not Seattle-based. It's, um, everything that's used to high-fiving. As we go through that process. King County Police Chiefs and Sheriff is another organization we're involved in. Uh, Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, which is a statewide organization, uh, compiled with all the, uh, police chiefs or executives in the state. As well as sheriffs. Uh, it is also one of those, um, organizations that we use to help lobby for law enforcement needs. Funding and it does have some additional funding that we can take advantage of if it meets our needs. Um, and International Association Chiefs of Police deals with a number of mandates and, and kind of keeps us aware of what's going on. Down the road, um, what's on the horizon that law enforcement has to be aware of, right? Uh, when we talked about, um, grants and fundings. Uh, one of the things that is in the works and it's not, probably can happen this year and next year or the year after that, but. Um, federal funding may be mandated on whether your police agency is accredited. Um, if you're not accredited, you may not be, um. May not be one of those that they would consider for some of those federal funds. FBI LEAD is a instruction, uh, group that deals with leadership instruction. Um, we've used them in the past. One of our supervisors this year attended some training, uh, with that, uh, FBI is kind of the primary, um. Portion of that, but LEAD is, it's an organization that's not necessarily run by, uh, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, but. Uh, law enforcement executives throughout the U S that, um, have. High levels of expertise in certain areas, uh, involved in that instruction. So you can always settle some things off and make sure that we're in the right direction. And LEAR deals with our evidence and, uh, records association. So. There are a lot of mandates that occur through, um, disclosure of public records as well as. Maintenance of evidence and, uh, our records manager and evidence, um, coordinator is an active part of that. We go through that process. Next. Um, I talked earlier about the fact that the police department is very contract-heavy. Redmond Police does our dispatching services and, um, the amount of funds that they charge us is, uh, pretty reasonable. Uh, we do occasionally have cost of living, uh, increases that occur for all these contracts. Um, and because their costs rise as well as anything else, but. Redmond Police Dispatch Service uh have been dispatching for us for a number of years and um. We will continue through that service. Isiqua Search Services. Uh, we have a contract with Isiqua Court to deal with um filing of. Court cases as well as the investigation of incidents that occur down there. Um, as it goes to trial when we file court cases in there. Um, and Isiqua Jail Services is one of the jail services that we use. It makes it very convenient for us if we have somebody that doesn't have any medical issues or is not. Um, suffering emotional issues that needs to be under constant surveillance. Uh, we can put that person into the Isiqua jail. It's a very reasonable uh fee associated with any type of service we do. We do have one. Um, one bed that we reserve for us to use throughout the year. Uh, as we go down there and at odd times, um we use that on a regular basis. Um, Score Jail Services is an entity that's in South King County. If we need to um hold somebody in custody that has. Uh, medical leads or is somebody that uh is going through some emotional trauma. Um, that is probably where that individual is going to go. It is not something that we use um on a full-time basis. Uh, because the costs are um exceptionally higher, uh cheaper than King County jail, but uh it is higher than. Uh, what they would have in Isiqua because of those other needs that they have down there. Um, Public Defender Services and Prosecutorial Services, uh we have a contract with a prosecutor that. Uh, deals with a number of cities of our size, but also uh handle our cases in uh Isiqua. And Public Defender Services, which um deal with all the cases we have down here, individuals that need uh. Defender services that can afford that. Um, the next one is Bothel Police Contract for Chief Services, uh that is one contract that we have and is obligated in the budget cycle. And um another contract that uh will uh start this next year is called Perimeter. Uh, it deals with concealed weapons permits. Uh, right now, um we, it is a very minimal contract. Um, but it is a contract that allows us to get out of the business of um exchanging money. Um, it's a very difficult situation for law enforcement agency to be the person that accepts the money for our regarding um. Concealed weapons for for type of fee. It allows for the the residents of Duval to um. Make a um. Application uh twenty-four hours a week. Um, right now they have to physically come into the department to make that application. This is a system that is used by pretty much all the agencies in our area to help streamline and speed up. As well as become more efficient in the area of concealed weapons permit. Um, we do have. Uh, a number of them that occurred throughout the month, probably. We could have a month where we'd have thirty to forty. Uh, we've had some that have been a hundred. Um, but we've also set some of those that have been uh twenty.
Are they able to pay online?
They're able to pay online and um that is one of the things that. I I always get a little concerned, not because I believe there's going to be some ability for uh corruption. But when money changes hands, when somebody writes a check, um there's always that aspect of something could be misplaced or something can. Uh, be lost in the transaction. This allows for that to happen. Um, it is something that um. It is, it is very, um, it will help us run well. Next. So uh law enforcement has a number of required mandates. Um, it makes it very difficult for us to um do things um and move forward. Uh, but there are things that we have to uh do as required by law, as required by um our needs through to keep our certification. Um, I left up there basic training and field training. Anybody that um. Has not gone through basic training, that's seven hundred and seventy hours, five months uh of individuals away from our agency. And then field training, which is um probably a little bit more than that because there's other things that we have to do to make sure that they. Are um getting ready for the academy as well as when they graduate from the academy, we have to make sure that we. Share the knowledge with them to to make them a good Duval police officer. Annual firearms training, and these are all minimal amount of times. Annual firearms training is sixteen hours. Pursuit training is mandated uh for six hours. And uh each officer is required, including our reserve officer, to complete a minimum of twenty-four hours of end service training annually. Uh, that's the minimum, and I don't think that anybody that wants to have a police officer, that has the minimal amount of training. Um, but uh those are similar things that we have regarding minimal training. Basic supervised for forty hours, advanced super training about eighty hours, uh. We do have some instructors in our department and uh they have to attend the basic course to be an instructor in certain. Types of tools or equipment that we have, uh but they also are required to attend recertification um during that process. Active shooter, again, um de-escalation training, sixteen hours. And it seems like every year there's some additional training that's assigned to us that's mandated. Uh, so you can imagine if I have a department that has um. Ball commission personnel trying to get this uh amount of training done throughout the year. Uh, can impact our staffing, can impact our production, can impact how we move forward. Next please. So, and then uh let's talk about our one-time purchases in the budget. Uh, some of these things uh were clearly outlined in my presentation a couple of months ago, regarding things that I found. Um, two thousand twenty-five, we have some ballistic plate carriers, the three things that. Uh, will help protect the officers, uh give them that ability to respond to some of those high um major incidents that occur out there. Um, not that we have uh that that occurs on a regular basis, but we have for the worst and hope for the best, right? Uh, trauma kits, um that's also in that process. Uh, we do have first aid kits in the car, but um. As uh we're kind of remote out here, we need to make sure that we have the proper trauma kits, one. To protect our officers, but two, uh protect the individuals that we may use force on. Uh, left in that budget and A D, we do uh need one more A D per agency as well as uh some low-lethal ammunition. Presently, the only thing that we have to um. To go between us using um minimal amount of force to deadly force is a taser. Um, that is a tool that every officer carries on their belt, but we don't have something that gives us a standoff. Uh, where we can actually de-escalate the situation at a a larger distance. Uh, taser, you have to be within twenty-five to. Thirty feet of the individual, uh low-lethal ammunition gives us uh forty to fifty feet. Uh, allows us to have somewhat time and distance. Uh, pursuit intervention devices are required by law to have um some type of way to enter pursuit in order to engage your pursuit. We presently haven't had. Uh, those are stop sticks. You've probably seen those on TV and movies and everything else where they throw that out. It's a tired inflation device. Uh, breaching devices are tools. Uh, we do not have any breaching devices or tools. If we needed to breach into a building to make a rescue or to um. To find somebody, um say we have a fire, we're there first, we need to breach that door to get somebody safely out. We don't have that tool other than. Our size twelve group that we have. We can kick the door, but we don't have that ability. Uh, security camera upgrade, uh we are clearly short on a couple of areas that. Need to be protected a little bit more and we need to have some observation and security cameras. That's two in two thousand twenty-five. Um, rifle replacement, personally, the rifles we have are meaning their lifespan, um. I've never been a fan of trying to replace all of our weapons at one time. Um, this will allow us to start some type of a replacement. Uh, process where we're replacing them periodically versus one big chunk of of weapons and go through that process, uh. Then a vehicle radio, we are short one radio. We like to have one in. Uh, reserve, the aspect of maintaining a vehicle radio in case a vehicle radio goes down for whatever reason. Uh, it's nice to have a spare one sitting around that we get through on that tour and and keep our um police car functioning. In two thousand twenty-six, we talked about uh purchasing ballistic shields, um ballistic plate carriers in two thousand twenty-five, ballistic shields in. Two thousand and twenty-six, that would be two of them. Uh, we don't have any ballistic shields that are certified in our agency. Um, we want to continue to purchase some additional uh intervention devices, stop sticks. Half in two thousand twenty-five, half in two thousand twenty-six. One more security camera to um finally outfit the rest of our agency appropriately. Uh, two rifle replacements, again, we're talking about doing something periodically versus one in a chunk. So two in one year, two in the next year, and then we continue that process until we have replaced them all. They do have a life expectancy and. Um, some of them are um showing their wear and tear. Um, detention devices, what's called a wrap device, it allows us to um detain somebody and and hold them in uh perfect care. Um, to eliminate any possible injuries. We can no longer use any type of hubble restraint. Or any type of um defect, a attention device that meets them. That is out of the way, right? So we're trying that out. Uh, some additional briefing devices, uh one patrol vehicle in two thousand twenty-six. Um, technically, if we were to look at our current uh vehicle replacement schedule, we would have two in two thousand twenty-five, two in two thousand twenty-six. Um, and um looking at our vehicles, the way they've already and the fact that we've had some staffing shortages that. Have allowed for our vehicles to kind of have a little bit more length in time. Um, we pushed that out for. Uh, at least one in twenty twenty-six and more probably in the next budget cycle. Uh, effort one to um replace something when it's appropriate, um to be a good steward of money, but also to. Hopefully allow for us to have some of the money within the budget for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six to uh purchase some of these other items that we need. Uh, portable radio also, we need to have at least four more portable radio available for us as a spare. Next please. Um, in two thousand twenty-six, we're looking at one FTE addition, uh as I outlined in my presentation, one of the very biggest concerns I have. At our agency is the lack of direct uh personal supervision. We presently only have two sergeants, uh we're proposing to have one additional sergeant um. Uh, filled uh in two thousand twenty-six, which will require us to have one additional FTE added. And uh earlier this year, we got rid of one half of an FTE because it's just difficult for operator and agency and transferred that over to. Uh, public works in the aspect of trying to use that for code enforcement. Um, but um this allows us to have one more additional person onboard. Um, allows us to move our first line supervision from forty percent up to sixty percent. Um. And uh may allow for us to utilize our existing sergeants to assume more administrative investigations. As you may be aware, administrative investigations are very costly. Um, that includes background investigations as well as any type of internal investigation or any type of outside agency that comes in. Um, by having that one additional person, there is the potential that we could offset some of that need. Down the road, uh but that will have to be evaluated as we go through that process. So one additional FTE uh and footing an existing FTE up to sergeant in this um. Our sergeants are also what's called working sergeants, so they also fill some of those roles throughout the process. Which gives us a little bit of a buffer. Um, right now we are at minimal. Needs and if anybody gets injured or hurt or is out for an extended period of time. Um, it shuffles all cards of the deck and doesn't allow us to function very well. Having one additional FTE um added in two thousand twenty-six allows for something to uh. Be better for us. Absorbing, this gives us a little bit of a an absorption, but also it'll meet some of those needs regarding personal supervision. Next please. So I didn't postpone and not include it. I talked a little bit about um. Patrol vehicles listed down there. But uh taser, uh the taser that we have are um meeting near the end of their lifecycle. Um, they still have uh the ability to be maintained. It probably will be maintained uh for the next ten years. But after that, uh there will be a requirement to do some type of operator trade um to meet uh that need. It is a tool that. Um, is rarely used, but uh when it's needed, it is highly critical to have. Um, just the taser upgrade, as you can imagine, is very expensive for an agency or size, we're talking two hundred and twenty. So just for tasers, um, um, just because it is uh very um. It's kind of uh the agency you have is very um. There's not a lot of other alternatives out there, right? Uh, body worn camera upgrade, our body worn cameras um. Meet the minimal need that we have right now, but um truly um. It is not a system that I would have bought if I was in that position. Um, and uh we have body worn cameras now, but. Ideally to have a fully functioning system, you need to have in-car cameras that are. Uh, included with the uh body worn cameras, they're synced together, they have automatic um. Ability to turn on, uh right now it's, you have to deploy yourself. We've had some issues where people have um. Failed deploy because they're just caught in the moment, going through that process. Um, but also the body worn cameras that we have now, I think we're the only one in the Pacific Northwest that has that. Uh, probably the only one on the West Coast that has. Uh, so that kind of gives you ideas to why. We're using what we use because that's what we have, um but it's probably not the camera that I would have chosen. Uh, two e-bikes for patrol, um as you're well aware, Duval is a Hilly situation. Uh, I would like to have more people that own bikes, um but I also want to make sure that they're ready to take on the investigation or the battle when they get there. Um, e-bikes allow for some of that to occur, our officers show up at call or they can respond to calls a lot quicker. Um, but they're also uh pretty refreshed when they get there, so they can handle with whatever situation takes place. If they're all the way down in the out of the park at some type of event or on the trail, they need to respond to something out here on Main Street, um. If it's a little though. Um, group patrol vehicles, we already talked about that. Um, lockable storage for patrol, uh inside the patrol vehicles, not lockable storage to store the vehicles, but they have lockable storage inside of a car. Um, we don't have that in a number of our utility vehicles, uh that's something that we've put off and um it would be great to have, but. Um, we'll figure out some other alternatives as we go through that. An additional FTEs, um. That is something that even though uh it's listed on here truly probably to do a B five. I'd like to do a um a staffing study that will allow some of those things to take place to to evaluate that that's. Ideally, I think for agency, at least right now, we're probably even with the sergeant, uh we're probably two bodies down the program, where an ideal. Agency would be for an agency or a size to deal with it. Uh, funding is always, as you know, it's tight, so uh we're doing the best we can with what we have as we go forward in this process. Next. So, questions?
Quick check in. Uh, I know we're right at time for, are we just to go a little further to do questions or would you want to carry it to the next? I really need more questions. Everyone.
Okay, and I would say let's um move it along with the council chair. They just want to. Remind council that we have a very full agenda tonight. This is not the decision-making night and we are talking very. Um, so uh if you're questioning a minor, it might be better to submit them by email, not for me or person of my identity. Uh, so let's go ahead and break and then uh three minute break for a restroom before we start.
Alright, sounds good. And just a reminder, you should have written our question, yeah, you found there, there's some information. And were there other presentations left still?
Um, yes.
Would we be prepared to add them tonight potentially?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll need to amend the agenda next eight months.
Um, so we could completely add his. Render uh presentation. Uh, I mean, the others are going to be fairly short, um, so it shouldn't be as long as. Right now, you're starting on three presentations so far, um number four.
And then we'll just need to make a motion for the finishes.
Ready, please.
Okay, alright, so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn at seven oh one and be back in a few minutes.
Give you a little. Hold your arm, take the high heels, you want to.
Excuse me, October fifteenth, the council meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the Republic, the President, the nation. In this world delivered to justice. First, please take your role. Uh Mayor O'Grady. Here. Mayor, please stand in the center.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Shapen.
Here.
Mr. Mercer.
Here.
Mr. Suckle.
Here.
Even Snackler.
Here.
Miss Cooper.
Here.
So we have a forum and just to note, Councilwoman Suckle is filling this evening and so the wind uh of seeing him coughing and. Et cetera, he's keeping his camera off for a chunk of the evening, but um he is there, uh so thank you for for getting here, even though you're not feeling well, Councilmember. Um under additions and corrections to the agenda, the presentations, um after toll brothers, uh we'll add. We uh budget presentation for planning the community development plan and the clerk's office. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion for this evening's council agenda.
Move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um moving on to the pro forma motions, uh we have two this evening. Uh first one is the National First Responder Day. Read that on the record. The city of Dubal proudly recognizes the exceptional bravery and dedication and commitment of our first responders. Including the dedicated members of Eastside Fire District Forty Five, the Dubal Police Department, who selflessly serve our community. And these and whereas these courageous individuals put their lives on the line every day to ensure the safety and well-being of our residents. Responding swiftly and valiantly in times of crisis, from battling fires and providing medical assistance to ensuring law and order. And whereas, first responders demonstrate extraordinary resilience and compassion, often providing critical support in conflict for those in distress. Ensuring that no one faces emergencies alone. And whereas, the contributions of first responders extend far beyond emergency situations. They engage in vital community education, preparedness training, and outreach programs to promote safety and well-being. Fostering a culture of preparedness and resilience within our community. And whereas, it is essential to honor and recognize the sacrifices. Made by these heroes who often work long hours under challenging conditions. And to express our profound gratitude for their unwavering commitment to our community's safety. And whereas, the city of Dubal joins in the nationwide observance of National First Responders Day on October eighth twenty. Sorry, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, as we acknowledge the invaluable service provided by our first responders, including Eastside Fire District Forty Five. And the King Dubal Police Department, whose exemplary efforts help make our community a safer place. Now therefore, I, Amy O'Grallander, Mayor of the City of Dubal, do hereby proclaim October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, National First Responders Day in the City of Dubal. I encourage all residents to join me in expressing appreciation for the bravery and dedication of our first responders and support their efforts to keep our community safe. Uh the second proclamation we have is recognizing Diwali. Whereas, Diwali, also known as the Festival of Lights, is one of the most significant and widely widely celebrated festivals of the Indian culture. Symbolizing the triumph of light over darkness and good over evil, it serves as a beacon of hope and a celebration of renewal. Inspiring people to embrace positivity and resilience. And whereas, Diwali is observed by millions of individuals and families around the world, including many residents of Dubal. Fostering a spirit of unity, joy, and cultural diversity that enriches our community. This festival transcends boundaries, bringing together people of various backgrounds to celebrate shared values of love, compassion, and togetherness. And whereas, the celebration of Diwali encompasses a rich tapestry of traditions, including the lighting of oil lamps. The decoration of homes with vibrant colors, the preparation and sharing festive meals, the joyful exchange of gifts. These customs promote goodwill, strengthen bonds among families and friends, and encourage acts of kindness and generosity within our communities. And whereas, the city of Dubal is committed to embracing its diverse cultural heritage, fostering an environment of respect and understanding among its residents. And celebrating the rich traditions that enhance our community's fabric. Our commitment to inclusivity helps us build a stronger, more harmonious society. And whereas, the Festival of Diwali serves as a powerful reminder for all of us to reflect on our values, to spread kindness. And to strive for harmony within our community, it encourages us to illuminate our lives with hope and positivity and a shared commitment to creating a better world for future generations. Now therefore, I, Amy O'Grallander, Mayor of the City of Dubal, do hereby recognize the significance of the Festival of Lights, known as Diwali. And its celebration on November first, twenty 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 four. I invite all residents to join in the festivities, participate in local celebrations, and appreciate the cultural significance of this joyous occasion. Let us come together to celebrate the spirit of Diwali, fostering light and love within our community. I now will move on to comments for the audience, um and I will read into the record our uh public comment goals. During the designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allotted a three minute speaking duration. While representatives, organizations may address the council for up to five minutes. And before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and city of residence. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments and written comments expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed to P O Box thirteen hundred, Dubal, Washington, ninety zero one hundred. Or deposited at the city hall drop box located at one five five three five Main Street Northeast or by email. Please be aware that the city council, its boards, and its commission solely entertain public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public commentary sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council shall be directed to the city clerk, who will disseminate it following the submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments and subsequently furnish them to the city council or the relevant board or commission. However, it's important to note that written comments will not be orally presented during the council or applicable board or commission meetings. Any written comments received after the meeting deadline for written comments will be shared with council at the next council meeting as part of the city clerk's report. Uh do we have anyone present that would like to provide public comment this evening? Right. Seeing none, uh do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
So.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to schedule the items, first up is mayor's report. Um I want to share that last Monday, um I had the pleasure of attending the King County Executive Small Business Awards. Um in the distinct honor of witnessing the Grinch Cat that I am winning uh a award for creative and sustainable business. Uh for those that don't know, they don't just grow their own food, but they're a one hundred percent zero waste business, where they recycle or compost. They use everything that comes into their their business. Um the food waste that comes from their restaurant is composted on their farm, which grows the food that they serve. Um so a pretty incredible honor for them. Um it was wonderful to be there and a well deserved. Recognition for their purpose, uh for sustainability and being a successful small business in the St. Paulman Valley. Uh our our chamber president Brandon Harrison was there as well. Um and I would also like to share that Miller's Incarnation also won a Small Business Award, so it was a wonderful day for the valley. Uh so very steep competition, um and our valley businesses rose to the top, so it was wonderful to be there. Um and that concludes my report for today. And we'll move on to the city administrator's report.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, city councils, members of our community who are here tonight. Uh we have a short city administrator update. We are going to present a city ball update as well as a community development uh department update. Um so we'll start off with uh turning it over to Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor, council, members of our community. How's you uh community development? My memory's not that great. Uh so just a quick update, our show of the opening stage, we um are prepping for our citywide public thing that is. It's open out in about ten days, and this is going to all members within the community and our urban growth areas, since the plan touches throughout the city. Um we're actively preparing the final P T S plan for hearing as well, along with the staff report and exhibits. Uh the transportation plan, we are continuing to make progress on that. Two of the four staff members have completed their first review of the plan. The other two will complete it by the end of the week. Our housing and land use uh element and future land use map. Uh thank you for the great uh workshop last week. We also met with the planning commission last week. So we are prepping a package for King County to review our housing program, and then we'll see. What type of comments we get back, and then we'll come back to planning mission, city council, what goes there, three, some three plus month out. So we're just trying to get some initial feedback. Um so we are definitely working on uh the element actively. Um including the land use, but we have to just be careful how much work we do until we get comments back, because we only are doing three. Versions of the element and draft. Uh at the development element, we are going to prepare our second draft in the coming month, and we're going to come back to planning commission and council again. Uh the building department attended C P R training this week, so thank you to Luke, who has been doing all the training of our. Staff. It's actually amazing because it's been a loss to them to do that. Next slide. Uh so we were really proud, we're really proud. We were in the M R C blog. Um armed tips for timely, credible, local government permitting, both for our new software, but also for how we get back. Uh get back comments to our development community. And so we were really excited about this. We wanted to let you know that uh that happened. It's not very often that Dubal, you know, ends up in the blog. So what we do, we're gonna let you know. Uh are there any questions? Thank you.
Excellent. Um just a few short updates from city hall. Uh first, I want to formally offer council members an invitation to hand out candy at city hall. And with consideration with uh our chamber of commerce. Uh if you would like to attend and hand out candy with us, that couple of people out front of the ball, as well as some of our um police department colleagues. Uh the route for trick or treating is not going to go down to the P D, it's going to stay on Main Street this year. And then we are happy to receive donations of candy or other um items that you would like handed out um from council members. We'll make sure that we hand out whatever we get, and uh if there is stuff remaining, I will try to probably get it out of city hall, so I will eat it. Uh so usually goes out to P D and our main street yard. Um we already talked about, um so Chief can have it, the leftover candy. And we have to do sometimes put it in patrol cars too, um when we have leftover candy, um we put it to use to give back to. Um we already discussed our meeting yesterday with C F M advocates, um their lobbyist group to talk about preparation of policy needs in Dubal. They um had a really nice tour with little uh Larissa Grundel, our city engineer. She drove four people around the city for about an hour, um showed them all of our good work. A real wonderful opportunity also to highlight the good work of our staff and um. Have Larissa do that with our lobbyists and thank you to the mayor, who came and joined us for that meeting and uh built that connection with that team. Um I'm planning an whole staff training day on November twenty first, twenty twenty four. Uh we are focusing this year on First Amendment training and First Amendment auditors. Safety training related to safe driving in city-owned vehicles, as well as how we can provide excellent customer service. Uh to those with disabilities, particularly those that have mental health concerns. Um we want to make sure that city staff are well trained and able to handle um. Handle providing compassionate customer service to anybody who walks through our doors. Uh this Friday, uh myself as well as uh uh our deputy city administrator and community development coordinator. We together are attending the W C I insurance annual meeting. I'm hoping to get a lot of information about uh potential rate increases and hopefully a slowing of our rate increases. For our insurance, as well as the two of us are attending attending training uh related to tort liability and those things that cause insurance to go up for small cities. And will probably for all cities, but particularly troubling for small cities where um those increases have a huge impact on our budget. And then finally, uh in a couple weeks at the beginning of November, I'll be attending um the annual labor and employment conference training. And with that, a short update from uh my office this week, but happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no questions, thank you. Uh moving on to council reports, just council, we're in council oversight meeting and they wish to share us. Um Mayor Richard McHenry and then Councilmember Natalie.
Um recently, I went to the novelty hill farm ribbon cutting that kicked off their uh fall market, it's not just a pumpkin patch in the little formies. They also have incredible vendors there, so if you haven't gone this season, um it's always a little different, go check it out. Um and also wanted to know if the Sound Cities Association, their deadline for um their board and committee appointments has been extended until the end of the month. So October thirtieth, end of business day, I sent an email out, so just a reminder, if before you apply for anything, um to just check in with me and mayor. Because if we get any duplicate applications, uh they will disregard both. So just need a heads up, if there is something you're gonna apply for within Sound Cities Association. Um I am glad they extended the deadlines, I just haven't had a chance to get it myself, so I will email you all back out what I'm thinking for myself, just in case anyone else is gonna apply, that's all I have. So I will email you all back out what I'm thinking for myself, just in case anyone else is, um, gonna apply, that's all I have.
Thank you, and number ten, council member Natalie.
So last year I attended the site transportation partnership. And I'm, I'll forward the presentation we received, it was on the four oh five, one sixty seventh corridor program, what they've been working on and kind of the status of, of those projects. And then we also spoke about, um, our legislative priorities, and I'm gonna forward that. I think that the draft they have is pretty good, there's some sections in there that refer to, you know, more of the rural King County roads and, and the issues of rapid growth. And, um, so I, if anyone has any suggestions, I'm happy to raise them. Um, but I just wanted everyone to have a chance to see what, what they were have, what they put for that legislative priorities, especially since we talked about it earlier in the cap. So, um, forward that on, we meet once a month, so I would need you to hear back if people were interested in making any suggestions.
Thank you, Councilmember Natalie. Is there any questions for Councilmember Natalie? Uh, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on, uh, to our presentations. Uh, first up is the Toll Brothers commercial applications, extension request for the River Bridge is one and two, with Aaron Hall and Mary, the vice president of land influence. He's looking for.
Uh, D U V. We believe our candidates, slides here. Uh, good evening, council members, uh, thank you for having me here tonight, Aaron Hall and Mary, Vice President of Toll Brothers. Um, I'm here tonight to discuss, um, the commercial property associated with the Ridge of Big Rock. Um, would like to give an update, briefly cover history and timing of the project, and also our marketing efforts. Um, on the, the history and timing, this project has gone on for quite a while. Um, elements of it actually were initiated back in the early two thousands or mid two thousands. Um, so Laura, please correct me if I get any of the history wrong, I'm trying not to go back that far, but, um, you have been, uh, involved with this project actually longer than I have. So, um, um, if you could please go to the next slide, actually, uh, so first off, I'd like to talk about just a little context on the project. Um, so, um, actually, if you please go to the next slide, Eric Gray. So, um, the Ridge of Big Rock community is made up of two phases, um, that are associated with two development agreements. And, uh, it's, it, it really consists of four final plots, um, the phase one and two final plots that are shown in green, and I, are you able to read the, the phase one and two? So the left two, uh, those are really associated with the, uh, D U V one development agreement. And then the right two, the Walden Development Agreement, and the majority of our discussion tonight is on the, the D U V, um, development agreement. Uh, we've been actively marketing the commercial lots, um, for both D U V and Walden, um, but have not yet sold any of the lots. Um, on D U V one, that pushes us back against an outside date for some of the commercial site plan, and we'll talk more about that later. Um, the D U V one history, um, the D U V property was owned by Wonderland Holdings in the early two thousand and tens. Um, Toll Brothers owned a small, uh, portion of, uh, adjacent, of adjacent property that was included in the D U V one project area. Um, it's the portion that's east of third. And, like, it was right in this area, so the rest of this was really the lion's share of the project. Uh, was owned by Wonderland Holdings. Um, in two thousand and twelve, um, and if you could go to the next slide, please. In two thousand and twelve, uh, the D U V, D, D U V one D A was entered into between Wonderland and the city. Um, due to Toll having that small, um, ownership interest, and Toll was also a party to that development agreement. Um, the Washington Holdings project struggled, um, to move forward over the next few years. And Washington Holdings put the project up for sale, uh, to the general market. Um, and in two thousand and sixteen, Toll Brothers entered into a contract to purchase it from Washington Holdings. Um, and, and late two thousand and sixteen, you, you purchased, took their place in the D A, and Wonderland Holdings was no longer part of the development agreement. Um, in two thousand and seventeen, um, the city and Toll recorded an amendment to the D A. Um, this was to make for a more attractive and successful development plan. And if you could go to the next slide, it was, uh, reconfigured the commercial lots of the community to all be south of Big Rock Road. And if you see that area that's in, uh, white blue on the left hand side, that is the, uh, reconfigured location for the commercial from that development agreement. In two thousand and nineteen, um, the D U V phase one, uh, final plot was recorded, that was the first final plot of the entire development. Uh, it created, uh, five acres of commercial that are in the balloon, um, in the form of five separate, um, parcels that were about an acre in size each. Um, it also triggered the requirement under the D A, um, to file a site plan application within five years. Uh, and then, uh, in April of two thousand and twenty four, um, the D A expired. Um, the site plan's middle deadline had been October twenty first, which would be next week. Um, and despite our efforts to market the property, um, the commercial lots, um, have not sold. Um, all that being said, Toll, um, voluntarily intends to honor the spirit of the requirements. Uh, to submit a commercial site plan application in the next six months. Um, now to talk a little bit about our marketing efforts, uh, today. Um, like I said, the phase one final plaque recorded in two thousand and nineteen, it was actually late two thousand and nineteen. Uh, and in early two thousand and twenty, there was a little bit of a disruption with COVID hitting. Um, this caused significant delays to active construction that was going on, but also creating upheaval on the markets and the commercial markets and everything kind of went on whole. Um, in two thousand and twenty one, uh, we listed the D U V commercial lots on the M L S. Um, the timing of this was good, uh, because we were coming out of the COVID disruption at that point. Um, and we had a significant number of homes that had been built within the Ridge of Big Rock project. Um, which is important to being able to market those commercial lots, because you see that you've got the rooftops that we need to support the, the commercial business. Um, the property was listed through a company called West Coast Commercial Realty, um, who do a lot of work on this side, um, it's part of, um, the greater Seattle area. Um, and since that time, um, if you could go to the next slide, please. Uh, West Coast Commercial Realty has been marketing the property. Um, we have had a number of interested parties and initial inquiries in those U V one commercial lots. Um, if you could go to the next slide, there's another marketing, um, image. Um, so we've had a number of initial inquiries, but we've had very limited offers, we've actually only had one offer today. And we are currently working through that, um, yeah, we're in negotiation, due to sensitivity in negotiations, I don't get into specifics there. Um, but I, I can tell you that, um, the, the group that's looking to purchase, um, is looking at, um, one of the lots in the, the D U V five lots. Um, and they're contemplating adding an athletic facility there. Um, so we're, we're working through that agreement. Um, turning to the Walden lots, um, in August of two thousand and twenty three, we began actively marketing the Walden commercial parcels. Uh, and those are lots four oh seven and four oh eight that you can see there in, in orange or brown. Um, interest has been strong in those parcels. Um, lot four oh seven had interest from a number of parties, um, wanting to bring in a daycare. Um, that interest on that specific use was strong enough, um, that we were able to put together a site plan application based on that programming that we were seeing. And we have submitted a site plan application on that, it's gone through one review, um, by staff. And we should be resubmitting that, um, here shortly. Um, so that is moving forward, and we have, uh, and the real good news is we've got one party that has made an offer based on that plan, and they're very interested in moving forward. Um, and so we're negotiating with them, and hopefully we'll have that under contract shortly. Um, additionally, lot four oh eight has had a fair amount of interest, um, and we've got another party there that we're negotiating with actively. Um, and those lots could be, um, under contract in the next thirty days, so we're excited about that. Um, in conclusion, uh, we've been actively marketing the commercial element of the site. Uh, we plan to continue to do so, and we're excited, excited to have these three parties that are, um, are close. And we look forward to moving forward, um, with development of these lots. And that concludes, uh, my presentation, would be happy to answer any questions.
Would you like sharing with the businesses that was interested in four oh eight?
Four oh eight, because we're in negotiation with them, I really don't feel like I can disclose that right now, I hope you appreciate that, I'm confident, Charlie. So, I believe they are another athletic facility, that are different type of athletic facility.
Besides really just looking for a category on that specific.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Councilmember Isaac saying?
The application process, what people were talking about here, right?
Well, this is just the presentation, I guess.
Should move up to that, right?
Okay, it's on the agenda. As far as decision.
Okay, um, what was the timeline that when you finally were able to get the commercial? You have, there's a ton of you get someone else advertise itself.
We, we were able to get them in two thousand and twenty one, we were able to, we, we listed the property at that.
What, what's the name of it?
West Coast Commercial, so it's been on the market for thirty years.
They've been in this since twenty twenty.
Councilmember, where's any?
And this is sort of more general, you, you sort of touched about the disruptions, obviously, in the world, but, um, and sort of the timing and marking. I was just curious, because it's not an area focused for me specifically, but the broader market conditions, I knew D W O L has some specific, uh, geographic data based on location. But obviously the, the demographics here and, and, and infrastructure. But I was just curious in terms of the broader looking forward outlook, I mean, it's great to hear that these three, you know, offers are under, there's, there's active discussion, and you feel good about sort of these, um, moving forward in the next six months, just more broadly in terms of market conditions all up. Obviously, the economy has recovered, but some of the challenges D W O L have will continue to be challenges, and, and was just curious about your perspective for the, excuse me, the remaining lots.
Well, my, my crystal ball is as good as yours, and it's an election, um, so, um, I, that being said, we're, I, I think we are feeling good about the amount of, and interest that we've had as of late. Um, you know, you, you get, uh, people such as, you know, there's a dentist who's, um, moving forward with a proposal over on, um, uh, D W O L Village. Um, and they, they play a little different game, and, you know, may have different cash availability. And so where the market's going this way, they may be able to go a different direction. Um, these are smaller parcels, and, um, so these aren't, they're not institutional investors that are, you know, going with where the market goes as much. So, you know, I, I think you have a broader market, and that's, that's good here. Um, that being said, um, you know, if you look at, um, one of the slides I have there, should, looking at the, the area from, uh, from the west, looking over, um, Main Street at Safeway, and then you start to get a feel for these parcels are a little bit more challenging, because they're down Big Rock Road. Um, you've got the urban growth boundary to the south, so there, there are no rooftops to the south of you, or relatively no rooftops. So there's a little more challenge here with trying to, to find the right, the right, um, buyers and the right, um, developers for that.
I was just sort of looking for a sort of a high level call, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, okay, so when you say it was actively marketed, I was just curious, because I'm a business owner and I tend to get emails about new commercial listings in our area. And I hadn't seen this one pop up until recently, so was it a different strategy of like not widely casting it on marketing or?
No, it had been widely casted in the commercial markets, um, with the, with the commercial, commercial agents on the commercial M L S. Um, and, you know, I, um, I thought they had a list of all, unfortunately, I don't have a list of all those places that it was, was marketed at, but I, I can assure you, we were, and our interest is to try to, to, to liquidate this, this asset as soon as we can. So we're motivated, um, just like the city that I can see with commercial development occurred here. Um, so I, I can assure you, I, I don't have that list just to me, unfortunately, of all the places that was listed. But it was out to the, the commercial market, and we've been getting inquiries for three years on it.
Any other council questions? Councilmember Natalie, I can pull that to see if the others do, councilmember, so do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. No.
I do have one quick question, and that is, um, the D U restrictions, um, that are part of those five lots, um, related to Safeway as far as businesses can go in. What, can you remind me of what the expiration date of those restrictions are?
Two thousand and twenty eight.
Okay, so we're actually not far off with that.
Yeah.
Thank you, um, councilmember Natalie?
So we have a, a meeting about economic development, our comprehensive plan, how that is a component. And one thing that was discussed was that, you know, we really value having smaller independent businesses, um, that will sell again by you in chain stores. And we've been encouraging that kind of development, and there is a demand for small businesses to have a location that, we have, and I don't know if you saw the presentation, but we have very, very high occupancy, and it's very expensive, um, rent here. And so to help our city, we need to have more availability. And so what I, what's hard for me to put together is, um, you know, a difficulty, um, finding a developer to build this out when we know we have just a tremendous demand.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe, and I don't know how exactly you're marketing, but, um, like, if, if they're being sold in, in, I know it sounded like smaller parcels to you, but those would be a large parcel for a small new independent business to try to purchase and develop. Are you looking for that, is that, is that what you're marketing, or are you hoping maybe someone could develop little lots and have several different, um, little smaller units within, you see we're in the economy, it's just kind of a, it's kind of confusing that we're really struggling with, people trying to find business locations, and that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's challenging to get someone to come in speculatively to build that, that facility.
Right.
Um, and we are trying to keep the doors open, because, and I think that's why we've had so much more interest in four oh seven and four oh eight. And the two isolated pieces, because they're standalone, it's easier for people to get their arms around it, the, the five lots that are together. Um, there's a lot of interconnect, connectedness there with, um, parking and stormwater and, and, and those things. And, and so we're, we're hopeful with this, this potential buyer that we have, that we're working through things right now. Um, that we're able to work out a solution that works for them, where we provide some combination of those things and, and assurances for how that moves forward. Um, so just the kind of person or kind of investor that you're, you're talking about is able to, um, start up that small business there, um.
So they'd be willing to make more smaller units, not without a tenant sign, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, potentially.
The big tenant.
Yeah, we've had some bigger investors who looked at, at the five lots and, and haven't been able to make it work. One of the problems is the master plan that was approved, um, has second story commercial. And post-COVID, you've got, so second floor retail doesn't work on second floor. Um, you've got the demand for commercial office space, which is another use, um, is not, not, it's not. the demand for commercial office space, which is another use um is not not, it's not there. Um, you see the commercial market, commercial office space imploding right now. Um, and then you've got construction costs have gone up considerably and when you go to a second story, that gets a lot more expensive. And so we are looking at options to try to address that that concern um and 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 that's one of the reasons um the the other two parcels didn't have that constraint or that expectation and so um that's one of the reasons they've been able to move forward. So um we're planning to meet with staff in the next month or two and see if we can look harder at the regulations and find a way that we can, what's the path to get that there where we can move this forward?
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Hall, I'm very.
Thank you.
Uh, now we'll move on to uh our other thing, so that is um continuing our budget conversation on community development, of course, and also questions regarding the police department. I need, oh, that's good. Sorry, uh, IT budget and the courts. With that, do we want to start with the questions for the police department?
Mine was rather getting short, it was really just, I I know you when you presented a couple of months ago and then you had your private vehicle trauma kits, which has some really cladding funders and everything for trauma, I was just curious, it was more of an informational question around uh if the squad cars are equipped with first aid kit separate and then whether your officers carry what now came on or or they're such quick, because you know, again, that you might arrive before a first responder and EMS and 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 that's obviously a more common with fentanyl and just other drug issues relatively low cost, but if we like to do it for things like that.
Yeah, our cars do have first aid kit, not trauma kits. Um, and so when you have major trauma, gunshot, knife, whatever the case might be, or even something that we respond to somebody who has an industrial accident, right, um, we don't have like tourniquets or something like that. Officers carry tourniquets, I carry one myself, um, we're through that process. Narcan is kind of hit and miss right now, um. There used to be some um funding through the health district to pay that. Um, that funding is kind of drying up a little bit, I carry it.
Councilmember Natlin?
So you had mentioned about that we're going to hold off on purchasing a few vehicles because we can extend their life a little bit longer. And I I hope I'm remembering this right, but um I think we have funds, I don't know if it's anything fund or something like that, where we figure out, you know, a vehicle lasts six years, we take the cost of the vehicle five by six and then every year we charge ourselves one sixth of that cost, knowing that then we'll have enough money to set aside to buy the vehicle, so I guess what I'm thinking if we're choosing to delay purchase of that vehicle, are we still sending that um for the vehicle replacement, the full replacement cost that we need to, are we holding off on making that transfer here?
Well, I I just want to give a little clarification too, not only is it holding off to place them because of uh the time they've been in service, they don't have the models that allow that, but it also allows us to continue to maybe build that fund um to buy a more appropriate vehicle. Uh, the cars that were wanted to be replaced are chargers, uh, dash chargers, they're not a good police car for a city. Um, and so we're trying to go to more utility vehicle and carry some of these supplies that we need. And all I want is to have those cost more than the chargers.
I was just going to say that the about that and I'm new to this, so based on the information that I've been able to um put together, um it's basically a a deep a depreciation at like like percent heavy um that's put in the fund for future fund, it's not necessarily, you know, going to meet the needs of a car purchase, considering the cost of the increase of the vehicles as well as the type of the vehicle that needs to be replaced. Um, I actually am planning to do a full audit of that fund to get a better understanding, like right now that that fund does have, you know, a decent balance, so you know, we do have some reserve there to fund future um vehicles, um but again, what's being put away is probably not going to meet the demands for a new purchase.
Okay, can I step follow up? Please, so um so it's interesting and I don't know why, in prior years, we'd been provided with kind of the spreadsheet and background on where we were, how many vehicles, what equipment did we have and how much we needed to set aside each year, and I don't know that I've seen that recently. Um, but I know that in the public works sector as well and some of the others, we've added new vehicles. Um, technically that would create an ongoing cost that we should be setting aside, right, for all of these new equipment purchases? Is that something that is still a work in progress, because it's kind of fallen to the wayside or I I guess what I'm I'm trying to understand is is our current budget fully budgeting for the the replacement cost of these vehicles going forward, does that make sense or are we setting ourselves up with making some one-time purchases, but then we won't have any money to replace them?
So the way the plan is that was set in place when I got here, which we're continuing with is new vehicles are budgeted in the department's budget. Police will budget in theirs, public works in theirs, utilize the utility funds and such. Um, we also, so replacement vehicles are purchased out of our internal service fund for vehicles. Um, and we do do transfers on an annual basis based on a percentage of depreciation for our current vehicles to make sure that we have funds. Um, I will be honest, um, it's I'm at the point where I really need to dig in deep to understand, there's not a lot of documentation. A lot of the spreadsheets haven't been updated, um, you know, before I got there, so there's some catching up to do, but um, you know, we are managing that fund as we have in the past. Um, and we do have some reserves, we just need to kind of fine tune some of those details and get that documented to continue that plan forward. Okay.
Any other questions related to the police budget, um, Isaac, councilmember Isaacson, and then Shaper?
Um, as far as staffing, it's obviously a challenging add adding more staffing, um, history of the police department. Um, did did we used to patrol or support carnation as well?
We did, there was a contract with the city of Carnation.
And can you history of that, when did it go away and like?
I don't know, a minute went away, it's been.
Ten years.
Yeah, it's already been.
It went away in two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
Um, so it's been, it's been more than ten years, um, and part of the reason it's gone away is that um the several chiefs ago was not able to document uh how much time our officers actually spent in carnation versus here, so we were actually gifting services to the city of Carnation. And uh so our officers were not in Duval very often, which was a huge problem, um, so when I was on council, we said no more.
Right, what what are some of my questions, yes, that did happen, how was our staffing? Then as compared to now, we're we're about two and a half square miles of city, you talk about population, but you know, a lot of our staffing for police terms is driven by how much you're used as well, right? Crime per capita, things like that, not fair, I think, Duval say, not accusing, right, it's just like, to me, I look at like, we don't have a lot of crime and I think that's where you're trying to say the one point six versus the two point average. It's like do, where are we, we cut all that patrol line and, you know, we have a larger population, but where is our, how much are officers used to justify the increase, not just population?
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about and that's why when you talk about staffing per thousand, that may not be viable, um, a way to evaluate the number personally you have. And what you look at is um whether there's the ability for them to do undirected patrol, right? And uh I think ideally an agency, my guess is probably based on the comments I've heard through the community, they'd like a sixty forty split, they'd like to have sixty percent of interaction with the public and the community versus uh fifty percent, just that little edge more, you know, it's more, I don't want to be in touch, but what my guess is probably right now, we're probably about thirty seventy, um, thirty percent of uh undirected patrol time. And that's a bigger judge of how you staff things versus staffing per thousand. And I do not believe that two point two is where we need to be, that is nationwide and there's areas that need that type of staffing. Um, um, the state of Washington is the lowest staff, as you probably heard in all the news and everything. Per thousand is one way to look at it, but it's not necessarily the ideal way. Um, um, when I talk about staffing, where I come from, it's based on undirected patrol time versus directed time.
Right.
Um, and I think we need to, the staffing allows for that there. Um, right now, our officers are spending a lot of time with reports, filing cases, getting these taken care of. And it is a different type of a crime here in Duval than it is in other jurisdictions. Uh, we do have a lot of multiple call type um responses because it's a domestic or it's some type of burglary or it's an unsecured property, uh, we don't have a high level of retail debt. But we do have a lot of the domestic and the quarrels and um that is very common here, uh, because of the metro community and that probably takes takes more time for an officer to handle than somebody who just goes and takes a step from a retail establishment. Uh, all those things are more complicated investigations.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Shaver?
First, uh, chief, thanks for your presentation, it's a good insight, I think, for us council members to uh see what uh what needs we have in the future, where maybe some of our deficits uh have been, uh, where we need uh upgrades or improvements, uh, so uh so so thanks for that, I certainly see anything on there that's off the wall or or unreasonable uh at all and as we would, I all agree, uh, it's really important for us to have a top-notch uh police force. Uh, my question uh is related to mental health professional. Uh, you know, we we had one uh for a while and I think from the PD that I heard uh uh, the uh, the help that she gave was very uh, very valuable. Uh, do you know what's going on with that now, uh, is it something we need to plan for in our budget or or what do you think?
Oh, at the time when she was here, it was in her local remote Redmond Police Department.
Yeah.
Um, they've gone through a number of mental health professionals uh within their organization. Uh, it's very difficult to find somebody who wants to go into this type of a business, so when yeah, the private sector is so much more financially, uh, and they have a lot of, as you can guess, you know, uh, student loans and stuff to pay, so um we do have the ability to utilize some resources on call, uh, we don't have somebody dedicated here. Um, once Redmond, and I've had a discussion with Redmond PD, uh, with their chief, because once they have that organized again, we're probably at their local level for that type of staffing. Um, may not require uh a big financial burden, but more of just the interlocal aspect of on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, good, so right now, we're kind of waiting game on.
We're kind of waiting game, but I do have some connections where if I need to have some type of mental health resource.
Okay.
Any other questions on that, please, for our budget? Thank you, chief.
You go.
And Director Thomas?
Uh, Laura Thomas, uh, community development and I guess that is the state of two. And the department is kind of managed by the me-legged school right now, which is that the city manager and myself, but I definitely volunteered to put the presentation together. And uh, so we'll go through that, first I wanted to talk about the twenty twenty four accomplishments of the United Department and there it's actually it's quite a bit and we're really proud of the work that happened and then kind of what we've been able to do with the A barn of this year and then we'll talk a little bit about the twenty five point six project, next slide. So this year, we have done a citywide network refresh, so that's firewalls, core switches, that project was completed. We also did an IT audit that was pretty extensive and that um task was completed, we also did a file server drive mapping and standardization. This was something that was on our list for probably at least five years and that took um quite a bit of work, not just from our consultant, but also from our departments as well. We also completed the backup disaster recovery recovery, um, that's obviously really important that you have a recovery. Um, another very large project this year was the public works building, so that was taking out the old infrastructure so that we could rebuild rebuilding and then putting in the new IT infrastructure inactivity user setup and then new rack and it's all now nice and safe in a um essentially a room at the um public works building, then you'll see a picture of it in a minute. We also did two duo MFA um projects this year. One was an initial one for us to go into VPN, which is when we work from home. The other one was when we come into work and we log into the system with the four requirement as part of our separation requirements, um, so that our police department information remains safe and secure. We also have done the Sam server deployment, that is in progress, we're about thirty percent complete, we'll be complete with that by the end of the year. We also are working on the PD hall wa- hallway rack cleanup and that is eighty percent complete and that will be completed actually the end of this week on Friday. So we're super excited, we had a little bit of downtime, so each time they take us down for about three to five hours uh from the network and from internet, but it's actually worked out really well, thanks to the police department. We do them on Fridays when it's a better day for us, but also when um it's convenient obviously for the department as well. We are working on our computer refresh, we did run into a bit of a snag and so we're getting that corrected. But by the end of the year, we will have at least fifteen staff computers replaced and we'll have five council member computers replaced, so stay tuned, you'll be getting an email in the next three weeks, we'll replace the first five. And we do know which ones we need to replace based on age and how many times they have to bring them through IT for some for some care. Um, next slide, we can. So this is the public list building, so you can see how nice all of that looks when you look at it from the back. And then the organization of um you know, our spare type of assets and then that is the rack that it's installed in. It's never looked so clean or that good, by the way, so they've done a really good job, so I wanted to make sure we got a picture of the um back of the rack, now the next one, you'll see what they, what we walked into. And so this is the hallway rack and cleanup, the new server deployment and honestly, it is difficult having it there just in general because it uh kind of hung out past um where the wall is and people could get hung up on it, so uh that project will be, yes, see you.
Um, I should also add, and she comes along, I guess, what was it called, or mini audit with um?
Yeah, LeMax, I believe.
Yeah, they said, clean this up. So.
It it does not mean any standard, similar reading, does it?
I mean, that's almost me, really, really, so. We're, we are definitely getting off, as I said, the uh IT department has done a tremendous amount of work, but we've got a little bit more to go for the next couple of years, but they definitely stabilized the system and that's what's important. And next one, so let's talk about twenty five and twenty six. So I did within there a contract estimate currently, we have a contract with R or A barn, it does expire next year, but we are looking at remailing it. And the costs are going up a little bit for twenty five and twenty six, so just the contract amount for their services is just over three hundred thousand and twenty five and then twenty six. The total IT budget for twenty five and twenty six is uh just over six hundred and seventy six thousand in twenty twenty five and then it's reduced a little bit in twenty twenty six because there's not, there's many profits on the list for twenty six. Next slide, so what are we doing in twenty five and twenty six, we are, I can't include, we are upgrading from Windows ten to Windows eleven. So if you didn't know it, teams relies on Windows eleven starting next year, so we don't really have a choice. We are moving in that direction, we also have about thirty computers over the twenty five, twenty six period that are uh going to be refreshed. We also are really doing a host server refresh and then an MGM implementation for the city and the police department. And that was, that's in and that's out, um, are there any questions from the fellow in here?
Excellent, thank you. Can you?
Uh, thank you. Good evening. Um, so we will be talking about the city clerk's budget. So, um, next one, please. So we do quite a lot of stuff, um, and this is part of what we do. Uh, business licenses, stuff like business licenses, uh, preparing material for council meetings. Um, and, um, and then processing the after the next day. Um, facilitate, uh, making sure that we're compliant with open public meeting laws, making sure that everything is uh put up in the newspaper and then we meet those requirements and also working regarding um open government trainings, doing uh pet licenses, that is uh, one of those many things that we do. We are the initial point of contact for City Hall. So if someone wants to come in and they have a question about their um utility bill or utility when they come in, uh, we are the first people that they see that we are the um for everything. I mean, it goes from utility billing to there are cows on the loose, as we were telling some of the candidates, uh, for our admin uh position or I mean, from there on, someone wanting to help us uh make a, a documented for that. So it, it's all sorts of things, but we also work the public records request. We also deal with the ordinances, resolutions. Um, we also help with maintaining the website and uh manage the facility rentals um of not the fields that is public works, just the Rose Room, uh, Visitor Center, as well as the training book. Next, please. So one of the things that we are doing differently this year is that we are actually um, Beth didn't want to deal with me anymore. Insert newspapers, it's like, we're divorcing. So finance and administration will separate and now it will be finance and then it will be the city clerk's office. So we are getting our own budget. So, um, as of uh January first, we'll be department eleven and I know this is minutia, but uh, uh, finance and administration is to be fourteen, now will be eleven. We'll have our own set of things, so as we have our own new budget, um, we're essentially starting everything from scratch.
Completely.
Well, there's, I'm sorry, you're right. There is a lot of good groundwork. We're just starting uh on our own, um, for
That is more transparency, that reporting more clear.
Yes, thank you. So, uh, next, please. So, oh, thank you. So we are the smallest department. Uh, we are only three. And right now, we are actually, we have a vacancy uh for admin one. We've been doing second rounds of interviews uh between today and tomorrow. Uh, we'll have the last one tomorrow. That position is currently being occupied by a P M. So once that, um, once we hire someone, we'll have a full team and we um will be able to just take on, on all the other responsibilities that we uh, that we have, but um, we do have a, uh, next, please. We do have a potential shift of duties and that is if council decides to approve the additional position for finance department, which I believe was finance manager, then a lot of the responsibilities related to cash receding, um, especially payments that come by mail, um, and especially those will be transferred over to the finance department. So that would free some of our time to uh potentially do other stuff. Um, and we will continue helping people that come into City Hall if they want to make a payment on their utility bill, if they want to pay for their um, for their permits, thank you. Uh, we will still help them, however, that um every day of the, the the mail, everything that comes through the mail will be shifted over to finance. And this is important because as we uh won't have a communications coordinator, there are some responsibilities that will be shifted back to the clerk's office. So before we had the communications coordinator, the clerk's office used to do the, the newsletter. So potentially that's one of the things that we will redistribute over to uh the clerk's office. Also, we would um have to have a bigger role on website managing, uh, management and posting of, of material on the city's uh social media accounts. So where we had it before is that we each have our own piece, so we will try to figure out a way to make sure that that part is managed properly and that um it all falls in different sections. Um, and we currently do not have uh the capacity to continue taking on payments and adding those um, those responsibilities that I current, that I previously mentioned. So that change would be uh a proposed staff change from admin one to admin three. And the idea is to reclassify that position of administrative assistant one to one, uh, to an administrative assistant position three. Uh, we want also that, we want that person to also provide more support to the city administrator and to other directors. And as um, continue with the monthly newsletter and um me, and as I mentioned already, the social media uh stuff, so um with that in mind, in the, the basics, uh, the budget for the clerk's office is really basic. There are two items of note that particularly, and I know that this is very important to all members of council, is the human services grant and that will continue to be at forty thousand for each year of the biennium. I know in previous years, that was still the same amount and then there were changes, um, as more money was requested for those. Um, we can talk about those as, when the time comes. But initially, as for the last previous years, we are keeping that at forty thousand. And the proposed budget also uh reflects allocation for training. So as the clerk, uh, as the clerk's office has very specific set of responsibilities related to uh, to records requests, to um to um records retention and all other sorts of uh fun and innovative things, uh, we would like to concentrate and keep on the training portion, which would could be um for me to work on my certified municipal clerk designation and also um for the deputy city clerk to attend the annual conference hosted by WMCA. So what have we done this year? Um, we've done quite a bit and I was, I was mentioning that it doesn't really feel like we've done a lot, but in fact, we have and, and it's, it's very encouraging. Um, so one of the things that we did was the implementation of next request that started from last year, but when the, the policy was implemented back in April, if I'm not mistaken, uh, we were able to roll out next request. We are working on um the completion of civic, uh, civic prep that our work has been led mostly by by the deputy city clerk, which will be for fields and facility rentals. And we're hoping to um deploy that fully by the end of the month. And um, full implementation happening shortly thereafter. So the idea behind that one is that rather than us having to deal with facilities and field rental, uh rentals manually, we would just automate them so that people can actually do them online. Yes, there will be some input, so it's not going to just be on its own and we'll let it live. Uh, staff will have some input in it. We will be, we will have to uh process some of that, but the way we have it right now is we are doing everything with spreadsheets and album calendars and as the volume increases, um we would like to make sure that we pay close attention to all of them. Uh, business licenses, so we do quite a bit of those too. Uh, this year, um, and this is only as of nine thirty, we've processed one thousand three hundred and fifty-six business licenses. And that is not only home occupancy, not also general business, but also those people that want to do business in the city and request a business license. They do that through the D O, uh, Department of Revenue Portal and those also have to get processed. Um, we've managed twenty-four council gatherings, meetings, special meetings, trainings, et cetera. Um, which take quite a bit of work because we have to put all the material together, push the material out, constantly check on the material, making sure it's up to date. And after a meeting, like tonight's meeting is done, whatever work was approved by council has to be processed. So if there's a contract, the contract needs to be pushed out for signature. If there's an ordinance, ordinance needs to be signed and it also needs to be published and then the code, the municipal code, if applicable, will also need to be changed. So there's quite a lot of work after a meeting. Uh, the clerk's office itself received, has received seventy-four public records requests. Doesn't sound like much, but we have gotten uh, some that require an extensive amount of information. And for the entire city, as of ten ten, it was one sixty. And I just checked, uh, actually as of today, it's one sixty-six. So I will probably break the two hundred mark, which um I don't think we got that close that last year, uh, but I don't remember the exact number at the moment. And our average response time is nine days. Um, we cleaned up and decluttered City Hall, so if you've been to City Hall, um, I know you miss those file cabinets as much as I do. Um, those boxes, boxes are done. Uh, I think it was a total of fifty. I mean, it's not just putting stuff in boxes. It's actually cataloging everything, making sure that those uh boxes that were sent into storage um need to meet a retention schedule or stuff that was in those file cabinets, if it's old enough. Um, and they've met retention that we can throw them out. So it was a lot of work to go through all of those. Um, we completed uh as of ten ten, two hundred and twenty-six facility rentals. Total of a hundred and four for the depot, forty for this visitor center and eighty-two for downstairs. And we've worked on eight candidate recruitments and we have reviewed or, or processed a hundred and ninety-eight submissions. So what that is, is when a candidate applies, we check every single application. Most of them we have to redact so that uh we can start uh, the, the selection process. And then when the finalists have been chosen for program, we have to um have the full applications. And then there's also a lot of other work to be done that that is uh rather than is involved in that particular um aspect. So um, one of the other things that I forgot to put here, even when I was reminded twice, is that um this uh City Hall used to be, um, if you called, we would answer. Sometimes uh the amount of uh spam calls would probably be three times more than actual calls from the public. So we implemented a phone tree system to make sure that we reduce the amount of those and that may not sound like much, but that um helps us with by not having the phone ring every six seconds, we can concentrate and do actual work and do a lot of the other stuff. And uh the calls get directed more efficiently. So after that, um what didn't quite make it to the twenty-five, twenty-six system, uh, budget rather, uh, one of the things was a Teams-based telephone system. Um, our telephone system is, is um rather outdated, um, it could use a makeup and having a Teams-based phone system, being cloud-based rather, would give us a, a great advantage in that your laptop is your phone. So if you're working from home, if there's an emergency and people cannot be here, um, all they need is an internet connection rather than if something happens to our physical servers and they go out of service. Fortunately, our phone system goes down with it. Um, also a document management system, we um were proposing to migrate to Laserfish, which would have allowed us to move a lot of the stuff that we have on our servers. So in one of our servers, the, the total capacity for it is one point seven nine terabytes and the free space right now is three point eight. And part of the stuff that uh, that Laura mentioned about improvements and stuff is to address this part. But we do have a lot of documents that we could move to um, a document, a document management system that would free a lot more of that space, would allow us to keep a closer eye on records retention and um just make everybody's life easier when looking for a document. And also, part of the work that is done by the deputy city clerk is HR-related. That's twenty percent of the work. We are very lucky in that the city administrator has an extensive background in HR and that um, you know, it's, um, that she knows so, so much about it. Uh, but with that, um, we would like to have a backup to um for HR-related stuff, so we could not accommodate the funds for the training to attain is the S H R M certification. And I don't remember how much it was. I think it was about six thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, it's one six and ten depending on which HR certification you get.
Uh, so that's where we are. Um, a fully held um budget will show up, uh, or will be part of the, the, the rest of the budget that is presented, but for the time being, are there any questions?
Councilmember, where is her?
This is sort of more education for myself, but things like um asset trapping for the city, is that, does that fall under your department or is that under finance?
Um, it should fall under finance and that's the plan in the board.
Okay.
But, but the clerk's office does manage our assets with um insurance. You know, our vehicles are managed through, you know, the insurance instead of, you know.
Yeah, that was more, and again, different, folks do it different ways, but like, you know, I don't and I, I kind of actually, but they could be on here, but like asset tags on computers or things of that sort as we hand out devices. I'm assuming that's maintaining, uh, obviously the computer somewhere, who's assigned what, but I was just, again, just a little more curious. I know there's a lot of other things we're prior, prioritizing. But those are, obviously the city has a lot of city-owned assets that we're cycling through and capital appreciation and who has a lot of these people come on and off council and other um, even, even from a staff perspective, this was, so appreciate it.
I will say that um, we have a set management. Um, I told that has not been, hardly being used and it is for fixed assets. Um, so I'm working with, we got to get some training on that application to see how we can actually utilize it. Um, I know Public Works has a system that manages their assets. Um, and I, our IT contractor, um, you know, is managing our IT um, or our computers, um, and IT equipment. Um, you know, we, you know, um, manage, so everything is kind of just you know, uh, um, there's not one allocation or one management. Everybody's kind of doing their thing. Um, so I'm trying to at least bring together, uh, you know, one system that will house all of our IT computers and equipment, all of our vehicles at least, so we can have a up-to-date at that point in time, you know, um, list and system that we can all utilize, but.
Yeah, appreciate it. I just wanted to clarify the, the clerk's responsibilities of, of this, of the clarification.
Councilmember, next one. So I was looking at facility rentals and I think it's great that there's some more automated system um to provide a, a way for people to rent our buildings. And I was looking at the, the revenue detail and it looked like we used to have several line items for, you know, individual buildings. It looks like they may all be combined into one that's called just Community Center Rent. Is that correct?
So we have combined the, the recording of the revenue for all of our rentals. Because the system will Because the system will allow us to track and pull recording to show what's been rented.
Building.
Yes, yeah. So we have all that capability. It's a lot. Part of what I plan to do in the new year is do a full chart of account audit because we have a lot of things that we're recording separately, which takes a lot of time and tracking energy out, which can really be combined. Um, and other things that we need to break out for, for transparency, but that was one of the things we talked as a group. We didn't see, um, you know, the value of breaking it out in our revenue since we have a system now that's going to provide us that reporting.
Okay. So the reason I brought it up is I think maybe the community center rent might have, um, previously been aligned with the rec center. Um, where the revenue would flow through when we rented the rec center. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we used to rent that building. Um, we had a floor through contract and then, um, so anyway, I, I guess when I, it was unclear to me if we had a plan to start renting that building now that Public Works isn't using it. And now that, I, I mean, it was underused during COVID as well. Um, I think for the team to work in there, but yes.
We have no intention of moving staff out of the rec center. We have nowhere to put them. Um, the maintenance yard will not accommodate park staff that are in the rec center.
Oh, the park staff is still in there?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would require the maintenance yard.
Exactly.
And until then, you'll be, that you'll be off limits and is. Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Sheik.
A more common question, but again, your presentation is very useful to the council as far as understanding the, uh, the extent and breadth of, of the state's responsibilities. So, uh, very informative for that reason.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Clerk of the Town. Um, and now we'll move on to our twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six preliminary budget presentation from Director McPhee.
Okay, so I just wanna note that, you know, our budget is our most important work. Um, you know, our budget serves as our legal document, getting everything we have to write into them, our obligations and pay expenses. And allocate resources and control spend. Budgets have evolved to include more than just financial data, can track our initiatives, our goals, and can be used as a tool to evaluate commitments and accomplishments. And I just want to mention the amount of work that has gone into developing our twenty-five, twenty-six budget proposal. Not just for myself and my team, but from all the departments, directors and staff. So it is a, um, it takes a village to build a budget. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so this is just, um, all the things that we'll cover. Recap expenditure, review of capital expenses, salary benefits, professional services, supplies, and balance and a budget timeline. Um, just to recap, we've had a preliminary budget presentation. Um, we also did a presentation, um, of revenue sources. Um, we had department presentations and now we're doing the preliminary, uh, budget presentation. Uh, okay, so, um, a budget is a communication tool. So although we adopt the city's budget at the fund level, it is a detail internally for fiscal accountability. Our budget is prepared using required bars code numbers um, and fund system to ensure consistency when submitting the city's annual report to the state auditor's office. So many of the descriptions, um, for line item expenses that you'll see here are based on that bars code system. So this is a roll-up of our total budget and this is the biennial. Well, it's broken out. So you see some past history um, of actual spend estimated twenty-four and then our twenty-five and twenty-six proposed budget amounts. Um, so this is just, um, a chart to show the percentage of, um, our budget um, for the different categories. Um, you can see salary and wages, um, are twenty-six percent of our budget. Benefits nine percent. Um, our capital budget is twenty-three percent of our total biennial budget. Professional services twenty-eight. Thank you, fine. You can go to the next slide. Um, so this is a breakout of, um, our individual departments specifically within our general fund. Um, and you can see the clerk's office is, has their, um, their own budget now for twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, previously it was included in the finance budget. Um, so you can kind of follow that change in amounts. So we've got actuals here with estimated spend and requested um, our twenty-five and twenty-six budget requests. Okay, capital expenditure. So this is just a summary of the new our public works directors in your department. Preparation provided to some detail on the capital project. So this is just a roll-up to show, um, what we budgeted for the biennial and in our specific funds. So we have, you know, a little over seven million, um, in the biennial that we are budgeting for capital projects. Um, so here's just a quick list of, um, some of the projects that we are, uh, attempting to, um, take on in the new biennial. Um, yeah, I think these are projects you are familiar with from the department presentation. Um, the rock overlay, the ADH transition plan, um, under the, the street sidewalk. Um, I will mention that, you know, we have third as we, uh, reconstruction on here, but it's not actually a budget um, amount in our budget as we've not determined that funding for that. So here's a listing, um, a whole detailed listing of our capital machinery and equipment budget. And so you can see the list of um, vehicles that are scheduled, um, or in our budget plan to be replaced, um, for twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, we have two new vehicles. Um, that are on here and then the list of equipment that will be replaced, um, and then the new equipment um, that we've also requested. So it's just a little over a million dollars total for the biennial for capital machinery and equipment. Okay, salary and wages. Um, so our salary and wages or salaries and benefits are one of our largest expense categories. Um, but it's also one of the most challenging um, expenses to forecast. So we've done our best to include estimated changes in positions, um, including conventions, stuff increases, longevity increases. Um, we have twenty-five and twenty-six pull estimates, um, estimated increases for our medical premiums and other benefit costs. Um, and also want to point out that our salary, salary and benefit costs are distributed, um, based on the type of work and, um, split funded, um, accordingly. So here we just have, you know, our FTE counts. You can see history and the twenty-five and twenty-six um, requested FTEs, um, and along with some, um, population growth. So this is just, um, highlighting the new positions, um, that we are requesting in our twenty-five and twenty-six budget along with some position changes. Um, these should be new. These are all reviewed in our individual department meetings. So some other notable changes, um, our twenty-five call up is three point six nine percent. Of course, that's based on a tenure average of June to June CPIU and, um, non-represented, um, staff historically received that same, um, increase of three point sixteen percent for twenty-five. Um, color for police are at four percent. Um, we have medical increases and these are our medical premium increases which range from seven to nine percent. The twenty-five and of course our WCA insurance costs, um, huge increase. Our formal class yesterday, twenty-five, which we have already received is, you know, over a hundred, so there's more than barriers. So here is a breakdown of, um, our professional services, um, for twenty-five, twenty-six. So it's kind of broken out. So you can clearly see, um, you know, our interim charges for services. So those are the amounts that will go to our internal service and funds for our T, our IT services, our building maintenance, um, and our vehicles and equipment. Um, you can see our impact fee, um, distribution broken out, um, trading and registration totals and other details. So a little over seven million dollars, um, each year for twenty-five and twenty-six for professional services. So supplies, um, this is just five percent of our budget. Um, but here is a breakout of, um, the types of supplies in the budget that we have for twenty-five and twenty-six. It was a computer equipment, um, repair maintenance supplies for our buildings, fuel costs for our vehicles. And of course our water supply charges for resale. So fund balances. Um, so as you know, cities are required to pass a balanced budget. And this means our appropriations are limited to our total estimated revenue and our estimated fund balances. Um, so reserves, um, for our funds are noted here, um, and they're a place really to support our cash flow needs for the city. So here you sh- see our, uh, projected revenue and expenses for our twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. Um, ending balance for the end of twenty-four and then our requested revenue and expenses for the twenty-five, twenty-six biennial as well as twenty-six projected ending fund balance. And for clarity, we've listed our three funds that are, uh, actually general fund, um, types. So you can see those two there. Um, as well as the listing of all of our other funds and fund balances. And this is just a timeline, um, of, um, where we are and what's to come.
Your, any questions at this point?
Councilmember Nefflin? I think that's three. I too quickly. What does it expect to, um, see kind of a budget with all the numbers kind of separated out into department? Um, just because it's kind of tricky, you know, with so many different types of funds and enterprise funds and, you know, kind of seeing the individual.
So some data or additional documentation, um, has been provided to you, I believe, that has a total overview of all the funds as well as a breakout of revenue and expenses for each fund, which will kind of give you, um, a broad view of, uh, the budget as well as a full line item detail of our revenue and expense budget.
Um, so in previous years, kind of each fund would be broken out into the categories of salaries and wages and all of those different expenses per fund.
That is being, that is provided on a additional document.
That is.
Yeah, it's just too big and too much to put in the slide.
Yeah.
So yeah, that has been, and I don't know how that's been really available to you, but, um, it it is, it is ready for you.
Okay. So, um, okay, well that.
You guys do, so go to Councilmember Sappel.
Yeah, um, are the, uh, new FTE positions, were they represented in your slide on the, uh, expense for salaries there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, does anyone else have any questions for their domain at this point? And go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, I was just wondering, it sounds like it's ready and maybe you thought we had it, but we don't have, I don't know that we have it. Is that?
Do, I don't know how that will. Council, do you know how that was, should be in?
Is it in there?
Yeah. Thank you.
It might just be like lower because, um, what kind of journal?
Who said?
Cause I've got the revenue, property tax and fee schedule here.
But I don't think that's.
Uh, Sydney, finish it right now.
So we will take the, um, agenda with links to all of it tomorrow and then we'll redistribute it.
It's the preliminary budget here.
Oh, you clicked the budget there?
The budget there on.
It should take you to.
Take you here to.
To the document. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wow.
Is that?
Then I assume that that link will appear on ours tomorrow then? Is that what you're saying?
It should already.
It's already on.
There. It's not, it's not.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, um, okay.
Well, it will be provided to you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, um, now we can move on to our second, um, item of existence regarding the new business here. Presentations and that is the, uh, revenue property. Or I'm saying, yes, that's right, that revenue presentation.
Okay, so we're just gonna do an update on the property tax levy and then, um, do the twenty-twenty-five fee resolution. If you go to the next slide. Um, okay, so we receive preliminary data, um, which is updated. So we have an update based, um, compared to what I previously presented during the revenue sources presentation. So if you go to the next slide. So our assessed value for the new construction is, is now more. And it was originally, um, much smaller. So it's been about, um, a so we're now at one oh six, nine seventy-nine, six seventy-four. Um, so that has increased our allowable level to twenty-six, forty-six, six fifty-three and previous amount. It's about a seventy thousand or increase in our allowable levy. But this is just updating, um, the numbers as well. Um, the levy rate's now at, um, point nine eight-eight. It was originally at like point ninety-eight-seven. So a small increase, but definitely wanted to note that. So here's our fee resolution for twenty-twenty-five. Go to the next slide. So, um, for twenty-twenty-five, um, we are going to talk about, um, our citywide fee adjustments, um, and the employers that, um, that we use, um, for our rate increases. So here's the twenty-twenty-five adjustments, um, for CPIU. So CPIU, um, in the past. So we use the two-year June to June Seattle to Cometh L U, Bellevue CPIU. Um, so you can see twenty-three and twenty-four. So, um, after this together, our CPIU is four point two-two for twenty-five. And so the rates that are affected by the CPIU are, are traditionally our utility rates, um, building permit fees, sewer, equalization fee, roof permit fee, rightful use fee and clear underground fees. Oh, okay. Oh yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry, I forgot I added this slide. So, um, rates are normally for, for utility, our rates are normally indexed by, um, the two-year average due to June CPIU. So traditionally by policy, we would be increasing our utility rates by four point two-two percent for twenty-five. But based on, um, the recommendation, um, based on the twenty-four financial review, um, the twenty-five rate recommendation provider is a zero increase, um, because we have strong reserve balances and, um, strong operational revenue and save for sewer at four percent. But for store, um, the recommendation is twelve percent to keep up with the normal work and federal requirements for improvement needs. And so you can see the, um, requested rates there, um, store being a smaller rate. So, um, the difference is minimal. So that is the, uh, recommendation. Go to the next slide. So, um, these are, um, rates that are adjusted by the, uh, the MRCI, um, and the ICC. So, uh, we have our four, we buy in five point three-six. So these are the And the ICC, so E N R four, we five is five point three six, so these are the. These that. By policy, we increase by E N R, so our parking impact fees, sewer general facility charges, water treatment charges. Storm journey management, general facility charges and public impact fees. Um, so our structural plan reviews are increased by ICC. So big rock ball field rental fees, so we have. Recommended an increase based on CPIU, which is a four point two two percent, so you can see the rates. For twenty five, also is listed the rate for twenty four for reference. So some slight increases in our fields. We also increase our staff hourly rates. And those are adjusted based on COLA. And other overhead and medical insurance premium increases. So there's no, oh, we can go back, there are, there's no change to proper records as we did a full review in twenty four. So we have no recommended changes to those fees.
Great, thank you, and so we will move right into our public hearing. Uh, first public hearing is for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six preliminary budget. And the second is for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six revenue, so go ahead, the public hearing, I'll read the rules into the record. Um, and then anyone who's here is welcome to comment. And here's the regulations outline for public hearings before the city, the city council chapter nine, the city council procedures manual. Any individuals seeking to address the council during the designated public comment segment must comply with the following procedures. First, sign in on the provided form specific to the public hearing, and second, thoroughly complete all pertinent sections of said form. On the end of the hearing, as announced by the chair typically the mayor, the city clerk will present the chair with the signing sheet. Subsequently, the chair will proceed with the agenda for the public hearing. Each speaker will be summoned to the podium in the order listed on the signed form, or they must communicate their name and, in relevant. Their address, affiliation with any organization or group being represented, and a corresponding role or position within said organization or group. Time limits for speaking engagements are three minutes for individuals representing themselves and five minutes for those representing a group or organization. Unless otherwise determined by a majority vote of the council president. The city clerk will monitor and enforce these time limits, setting a timer for each speaker. Phones should be pertinent to the subject matter of the public hearing and respectfully addressed to the city council with personal remarks being deemed inappropriate. Disobedient conduct, including disruptive behaviors such as bullying or harassment will not be tolerated and may result in removal from the premises. Speakers may alternatively submit written statements, which will be added to the official record by the city clerk. Questions posed during the hearing will not be answered immediately but may be addressed in the chair's discretion following the closing. Topics of this public hearing procedures will be available upon request and distributed to attendees at the outset of each public hearing session conducted by the city council. Uh, we have, do have two people signed up, um, or one person signed up to speak this evening, uh, and that was Hallie. Uh, forgive me, I, um, it's a bit difficult, I can't pronounce your name, I think it's. Laika?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, um, and you may approach the podium, you will have three minutes to speak.
Is this the board section?
No, so we do not have a public chamber or a viral section, this is only for the budget. Um, public comment, I don't think any of them would have been worth it.
Awesome, okay, well, I'm just.
If you have any written comments, we'll be having to provide them.
Okay, it was what I was meant to say.
If you have them and you're willing to provide them, I'm happy to.
I'm so sorry.
That's fine, thank you, I appreciate you, brilliant.
All right, um, well, with that, is there anyone here who does not? No requests, um, so with that, we will continue the twenty five, five, twenty twenty six preliminary budget hearing at the next meeting. And we will close the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six revenue hearing. And we will move on to existing business to discuss the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six preliminary budget. Um, and. Questions, go ahead, councilmember Naup.
I'm just wondering, I, I'd like to make the motion that we add a second public comment here to the end to allow for. A public comment, if, I think I was told that that may not allow all the council to read, so I'm just checking to see, it seems like there was a bit of confusion.
At the end of the form.
It's been.
I'm not sure.
Um, Oscar, um, can you just confirm that that's acceptable?
My understanding is the motion is to. Hold a second public comment uh, at some point between now and the end of the meeting. Um, and yeah, that's something that other councils do, and I think it's a matter within the council's discretion if they want to. Uh, if it wants to have that kind of a, a second public comment period.
Great, is there any discussion from council, we have pretend?
Um, instead of at the end of the meeting, can we move it between existing and new business so that we can hear it before our discussion?
Yes.
Great, so are you making an amendment to motion?
Sure, I'd move to amend that the second public commentary period occurs between existing and new business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion on a proposed amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Any objections? Motion passes, with that, do we have uh, any discussion on the underlying motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, oh, sorry, all those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and so with that, we will have a public comment added in between existing and new business. All right, we'll go on with our conversation now, so um, any further questions and discussion on the preliminary budget that Director McMenney presented? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that myself, when I was a council, I guess, my high level of understanding. Uh, but I think what you presented was a, a balanced budget, and by that, I assume uh, we're not increasing our debt in any way. We're not decreasing this strategic fund, and we're not decreasing any of our reserve funds, is that stated?
We are, we are using some fund balance, yes. We are using some fund balances in addition to estimated revenues to meet our budget.
Okay, and so are those funds, reserve funds, or what?
No, so the general fund, because our revenues. Are not enough to meet our requested expenses.
Yeah.
That we will be using some fund balance to make that.
Okay, and we'll. Uh, maybe it's already in there, are we going to see what that is?
It's in the fund balance.
Okay.
Um, and, and I'm happy to provide any sort of additional detail or clarity if you'd like. But when you look at the fund balance um, information in the slide. You can see revenues, expenses, and then you can see the, the ending fund balance and the decrease in the fund balance. From twenty twenty three through twenty twenty four, twenty twenty six.
Okay, in the general fund.
In the general fund, yeah.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
City Administrator McNam. Um, uh, councilmember Schaefer, on September seventeenth, I think it was the same meeting that you missed. We did a high-level preliminary budget, and one of the messages that came is that this budget will balance. Using fund balances and barely meeting reserve, but at the end of twenty six, without additional revenue. When we go into twenty seven, we will hit a fiscal clip, and it will no longer um, be a balanced budget.
Okay, good, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, our expenses are exceeding our revenue.
Yeah.
And, and this is what, of course, has been long discussed, that we will get that fiscal plus, which is why that municipal financial plan has been so important. Um, in the workload analysis, so that we can plan and hopefully council will take appropriate action to preserve services in the future.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mercer.
And that was just sort of a small point order, because I think Director.
McNam.
McNam, um, referenced the slides, we also, in addition to not having the link to the budget, did you get the meeting presentations this week? So they're not available on the website, so just.
City Administrator McNam, we don't put the meeting presentations in the packet because we work on them up until four o'clock.
Oh, yeah, yeah, not in the packet, but there's a separate folder in presentations, and they're usually available during council for review. So I was just going to give them, they're not available for us to reference back to, that's not what I was calling.
But though we, though we, though we try our best to get them available, um, during the meeting, if we can, we get them, make them available the next day.
Yeah, fully understood, I was just calling out, we didn't, based on the comment that was made, we didn't have access to look at them. Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions or comments on the budget, councilmember Isaacson?
So, the big picture, the question, I don't know what we're calling it, it's something we kind of highlighted, sort of approached a cliff, and. One of our various expenses also discussed today is manpower. And with this budget, we're producing our fund balance. Balanced budget and propose bringing more people aboard going into. A twenty twenty seven biennial that we're saying we're not going to be able to afford it. So, I completely trust every director and every staff member's need for people. But approving this budget with this staff, I have a hard time getting my stomach in before I sit. I hope we never force ourselves into a negative budget position, where I possibly know our own council. Uh, just a discussion, comment, if I'm misunderstanding that, I'd like to be corrected, but that's one of my bigger concerns with this budget right now.
Thank you, uh, City Administrator McNam.
One of the things I think you need to look at in terms of the additional FTEs is which fund is paying for them. The general fund is the fund that goes into a fiscal clip. And on the general fund, we've been very cautious about adding any positions that hit the general fund. And so you have the finance manager, who is a general fund expense position, that's the one add. workload study that will hit the general fund and the sergeant. The other adds store water manager, custodian, a very minimal impact on the general fund because the utilities are paying for them. And so as you're thinking about it, make sure that you look at the funding mechanism of those FTEs, because the utilities can fund. Quite a few of any FTEs.
And it, and for, just I want to add also that that is one of the reasons the communications manager is not moving on.
Um, is that we've had to make some really tough decisions, and while it is an essential service. Finance and other, and the police department is more essential at this point, and I'll turn it over to Director McNam.
I just was gonna note that the finance manager position is only forty percent funded by the general fund. Because the majority of the work, back most of our finance staff are, you know, forty percent or less on the general fund. Because the majority of the work that we do is supporting our utilities and building and permitting.
That follow, if I can, when I.
Go ahead, councilor.
The appropriate.
Yeah, during your second.
So the follow-up is. Without me digging into understanding how we do all this, right? That assumption is everything that costs to hire someone, let's say, the finance manager. What is it all comfortable jump, what I mean is that insurance increases, electric increases, phone increases, medical. Insurance, you know, cost all of those costs to hire someone, is that all absorbed only by the fund that they work for? Or is it across multiple funds?
So, we do a labor distribution.
Mm-hmm.
For funding, we split fund all positions based on the focus of the work that they do. So for finance staff, we are split between the general fund, building and permitting, and our water, sewer, and swamp funds. Based on the amount of work that we support for those funds. So, in addition to salary and wages, we also distribute. All of our benefit costs as well are split funded, um, but we also. Have admin overhead that we charge to those funds, so those are the expenses of the clerk's office, executive department, as well as finance. Um, for all of the supplies and expense that we have, we charge our funds and administrative overhead. Um, and there's a formula that we do that, um, to replenish the general fund for those expenses.
Okay, I'll have that follow-up, that painful without.
So, yeah, so the other funds are paying not only for our salary, but also for the supplies and professional services. That are charged to our departments, those are split between our utility funds and building funds and other funds that we support.
Councilmember Mercer.
Uh, this is sort of more of a comment, but it may still listen to the question, I, I think one of the things, just in, and I appreciate the work this staff has put in. Because there have been trade-offs, there were, I think, for every department, there were deferred expenses, things that were needed that they're not executing on. There were obviously some trade-offs in terms of personnel, um, I, I, and I think, you know, this was discussed a little on the last review, but obviously this is a. Not even once, there's a number of things coming together with the. The expiration of ARPA funding, which is one, but I think the broader thing, looking at all the legislative parties for all the other cities for shared, as well as the. The, uh, King County is the impact of the one percent. And, and so this is not unique, obviously, to do all, everyone's going to get this, and, and there's going to be. Um, I, I think it's a trade-off in terms of cutting services versus making services and working legislatively to lift the cap, which. I think everyone wants to lift, not to, and then, um, but, but I think there's, I wanted to sort of acknowledge the point that you made, but also. Indicate that it's not a unique to do all situation, or even the county level is, and, I, plus. I, I think the one thing that is unique to do all is obviously that. The impact of building permits and, and knowing sort of long-term revenue streaming sources, but I just wanted to sort of reintroduce that into the conversation because it's. Um, the budget is impacted by things that we can't control, but also things at the moment that aren't within our control, and really the only way to. To balance and not, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, to sort of uh, get into those fund balances. Leveraging the, the, the utilities that we do have available would be to cut services, and that was the way.
Anything else? And you have a question?
Um, not a question, just a quick reminder about emailing by Wednesday night. If you have budget questions, use budget questions in the subject line, send them to me, and then I will put them all together to forward to the city administrator.
Councilmember McNam.
Um, so one thing that other cities do when they find themselves in this situation where they're eating down a million dollars a year in the general fund is you, um. I mean, if you course correct immediately and say, we need to get closer to, you know, our revenues, meeting our expenditures. Or you have some kind of expectation of increasing your revenue. It's I, I feel, you know, similarly, a little bit uncomfortable. Um, to just continue going ahead, knowing we can't afford these and, you know, what we're doing here. And I don't know that there's a specific plan in place. Um, you know, normally, I, I, I would feel that you would ask the taxpayers if they'd be willing. To pay for more services before. I, I just, I feel concerned about it, that um, we are putting ourselves in a, a very precarious. Position where we would have to do mass staff reductions, starting at the next budget cycle.
City Administrator McNam. So that was a large part of the conversation on the seventeenth, is being really transparent with council on September seventeenth about what we were facing. And that we would need to decide. Likely by March or April, whether council is interested in going to the voters, either on a public safety sales tax. Or on a property tax levy initiative, and it's, I think, a very real. Decision that you'll have to make, and you need to make it quickly, um, on whether or not you can get additional revenue. Support in twenty five, because if not, in twenty six, we're going to have to make cuts to staffing and service. So, I feel like we had a very transparent conversation about that on the seventeenth.
Um, councilmember Isaacson?
Agreed one hundred percent, and because of that, where I have a better essay on what's going on here, um, and it. Again, I may need to have some one-on-one maybe discussion with finance director, better understand some of the budgets, however. You kind of, maybe you may have a better choice of words, it's like, we're going to, if, if we approve this budget. Before then, the central figure, somebody, something approved, and I have a bit of confidence. And I'm not trying to diminish all of your ability. And I'm not trying to diminish all of your ability, because something you've done. However, the customer that you've done, and then also say we're going to put staff, add FTE. So reducing service, pushing stuff down, two or three years that we're not gonna pay for, that we said we should have done. And then they come next year, after we approve that budget to our citizens and say, by the way, we need a version approval for more money. I mean, because we approved this council, more spending than we can afford. To me, it should be the other way around, kind of like we, you said, just one now, one is shouldn't we go then with, let's don't hire now. I don't know if it's gonna save us much money, but if we don't hire now, yes, there's some things that we're not able to provide, go to people. Can you afford this, or are you willing to some of this? And then we can sum in our budget very easily, and bring the staff in, bring additional staff in. That's where my head is, what I'm worried about, and it's only because you've had it so transparent, and I appreciate it. This cart and the horse ship in my mind.
Go ahead.
So, one thing I would say is, it will not be just eliminating staff who've been hired in this biennial. In order to prevent the fiscal plan, it's laying off at least thirty percent of the staff. So it's laying off me, it will be laying off your community events coordinator, half your financing. It's not a simple laying off the two or three staff that would be added in this biennial. It is a far larger cut, and a larger cut in services, in terms of what you want to provide to the community.
And I'll add, you know, as we, as, this body has made budget decisions over the last couple of years, um, folks will remember many of the things that are nice perhaps that I've said are not a good use of our funds because of the future fiscal plan. Um, and we are seeing that now. If some of that money hadn't been spent, we might still have another position on board, um, of general fund funds. Uh, so it's about, to the finance director, I mean, it's funny, we have a lot of dedicated fund, uh, staffing. But where we are short is the general fund that is consistent across the entire state. Um, every, almost every jurisdiction is having the same situation, uh, some cities started hitting it about a year ago. Uh, and this is known, and this is primarily forty percent, it's an arbitrary cap, one percent cap on the property tax. And not having the mechanisms for local governments to support their statutorily required services. So, when we talk about the fiscal cliff, um, and, you know, one of the purposes of having the municipal financial plan and the workflow analysis is to mesh up what staffing we need to provide our statutorily required services. Um, and the services that people want, and being able to identify the difference between the two. As well as have that, knowing full well that this fiscal cliff has been coming for the last fifteen, twenty years. After that, the initiative and then the legislative decision that overturned the Supreme Court ruling, saying that that, uh, the one percent initiative was unconstitutional. Um, cities and counties have been preparing for this, or trying to prepare for decades. Uh, the municipal financial plan is one of the tools to identify what we need to maintain those levels of service, which um, we've been very transparent along the way, that is likely, um, to require additional revenue or massive cuts. Um, I can say, when I, when, I can say beyond a shadow of a doubt, this city cannot afford um, financially, operationally, to be without a city administrator. Um, it is not feasible or reasonable. Most of the challenges that we had over the last several years, well, and since I've been a council member, have come from not having a professional manager at the helm. Many of the problems and issues that we've had in finance, or police department, or others, stem from not having enough staff at the table to begin with. And that puts the city at risk, not just of not being able to provide services, but significant financial risk and legal risk. Um, I've been working the last seven years to try and mitigate that through increased staffing, um, and changing how we do things. Uh, and we are in a one eighty from where we were seven years ago to where we are today. Um, in far as, as far as operationally and risk. Um, a year and a half ago, we did not have a safety program required by the state and federal government, safety program and training for our employees. We have that now. That's all at risk, uh, because of the fiscal left in two years. And so these are really serious things, and I think one of the challenges is that the, the inclination is always to go and ask the voters what they're willing to pay for. But we don't always ask them what they're willing to do without. And if they are willing to do with city hall only being open three days a week. Or things like not having a police officer be able to respond in a reasonable amount of time. Or having the bulk of its clothes because you don't have staff to maintain them, or the funding to replace the turf when it needs to be replaced. Those are the choices that are gonna have to be made, um, in the future. We got very, very lucky financially with the building, but also, we've been talking about for well over a decade, the city that when that building calms down, that there's gotta be something to replace that, that one-time avenue. Uh, and that's where we're at at this point. There are options to, um, meet our housing targets, um, with annexations and build more housing. That's one way to meet it. Um, there are other ways to meet it as well, but it's not gonna be a one-size-fits-all approach to stay like the city. Uh, and I think that is also a bigger, serious conversation that needs to be had in communities across the state. Is that there are all these laws, um, that have existed long before any of us who are elected officials on what the cities and counties are responding for. And, uh, we are getting to quite, many jurisdictions are at the point where they can't afford to provide basic services. And what is that doing to our communities? It has a ripple effect, um, beyond just what we see in staffing. Um, it has an effect on crime, it has an effect on, uh, traffic accidents, and it has an effect on, um, you know, usability of your, your parks. It has an, an impact on the, um, your community, when you can't afford to go to a community events. Um, and I'll be quite blunt, community groups are not gonna come in and do our events for us. That's been tried by us, in the city of Duval, and it doesn't work, and it doesn't work anywhere, people are not. Uh, and jurisdictions are going to pay organizations to fund their events, pay companies to fund their events. So it is a really big issue, and I hear, absolutely hear concerns about the fiscal cliff. At the same time, um, we have two years left to get caught up to and get things done that have needed to be done for well over a decade. And if we don't get them done before that cliff hits, and, and if that cliff is not taken care of by making really difficult decisions to increase revenue, to support the city, um, then the city continues to be further risk down the line, and those, those key things will never get done. Um, so it really is a critical situation, um, that we've been trying to sound the alarm on for the last several years. Um, between not having enough staff to do basic work, um, and now finally getting to the point where we're finally getting some of those things that are long overdue done. Um, we, we can't afford to move backwards as a city. So it's tough, um, but I would also take recommendations on what things council sees as non-essential in the budget to cut, to preserve some of that funding. Um, you know, we do, it is a big deal, but we have eighty thousand dollars in, of general funding in the budget for human services. Really important to the community, really important to the members of this body. But when you're thinking about the stabilization and stabilization of your city budget and your legal obligations as an elected official, I ask you to consider those things and make recommendations on what you think should go away. Uh, because that is where we're at, um, and that is the reality. Uh, it's not a good place to be, but it also is part of being a local government in Washington State for the last twenty years. So, um, just wanted to share that perspective, uh, and ask council to think about those things as well. And in fact, we've had requests for new, new items tonight, uh, in this budget, and then here, while we can't afford the staff. So, um, these are, this is why I've been so, um, persistent on not funding things that are not essential to our programs. Uh, Councilmember Mercer.
Yeah, this was sort of just to reinforce, and, and I struggle a little bit because, you know, for all these conversations, because of that there's positives on, on so close side of the argument in terms of short-term versus long-term. I think that a couple of things that, from a, from the council perspective, again, that sort of give back to past conversations, this sort of important surrounding uh, maybe even was brought up again tonight around sort of the long-term fiscal plan, which I think you sort of alluded to a little bit in terms of, uh, and, and, and in your presentations last week, I think, indicated that was one of the things, because you were purely focused on the operational, so you weren't able to do the strategic. Similarly, I think I heard the chief say, uh, and, and then not necessarily even around the public safety, meaning minimal obligations. But some of the, for lack of a better word, challenges we've had in the last, that have cost the city, you know, significant expenditures were the result of not having supervision of this sort of stuff. So, a lot of things I have heard, there, there aren't really a great trade-off, because you could obviously cut the line at them, but you could obviously incur, actually incur more expense, uh, it's obviously, you know, retention versus retaining, or, um, again, pushing some of these. So I, again, struggle, but I'd rather sort of invest aboard the short-term types that sort of set the foundation for sort of moving forward. And, and I've brought this up before, for me, the fact that all the other cities are struggling under some of these caps, that is a much better place to be than if this was a uniquely Duval situation to try to move forward in the, over the next few years, because I think the probability of making progress on that front, particularly when it converts into a conversation with the community about having to cut services, there's gonna be public support about that change versus, um, uh, you know, cutting something now that has a direct median impact. That, that said, I, you know, there are still trade-offs. That way, need to be made longer term, and including some of these initiatives that may never be popular. But, but again, you know, for lack of a public, there are opportunities to fund it, or fund it, you, you're, you're, you're sort of splitting that into, on two fronts. So, and sort of, uh, apologies for the, the, uh, there, but I wanted to sort of share that perspective, because I think it is more than just reducing the short-term expenses, costs that come beyond just the services side.
Thank you, Councilmember Mercer. Anyone else? Uh, Councilmember, what do you have?
Um, I just wanted to, um, refresh my memory and everyone else's. And also, in that preliminary discussion, what we talked about, I remember talking about potential parks and police levy. That's what other cities, a lot of cities are doing, and, and finding different ways of getting the revenue up to the voters to create initiatives that we can pursue.
Councilmember Mercer, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I don't have anything to add at this moment, thank you.
Thank you. Great, if there's nothing further on discussion on the preliminary budget, we'll move on to discussion and decision on the revenue and property taxing fee schedule. If there's no questions or comments, then we move on to our new business.
Ms. Sarah, apologies, um, on the property asset discussion, this again, with, with Sarah.
Um, we're gonna bring the property tax ordinance and the indemnical two hundred and five meeting.
Great, um, so let's move on to new business, the general twenty-four dash.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll have to comment. Uh, so we'll go ahead and allow a couple of comments, so if you're here for a couple of comments, uh, please sign in and press the button, I'd like to meet and city residents, you all have to bring the next to see.
Okay, okay.
Okay. I appreciate you guys so much, because, uh, my name is Hallie Blotka, um, I'm from Lacey, Washington, and, um, I work at Law and Sites and Non-markets in Washington. Provide a fundraiser to the P T fireworks fundraiser program. Um, I've also worked alongside municipalities, um, to help them, um, come up with a, with a decision when they have concerns about fireworks. So I just wanted to comment on the revision of the fireworks section of the municipal code, um. I believe the best option for the city of Duval is to adopt a revised ban that only allows the use of ground-based fireworks, so that's that one, the sparkler, smoke, not to hit items, and some other small ground-based items, um. This revised ban would be, provide a win-win-win situation, and this is why. Um, the first thing is aerial and explosive fireworks would be banned, which is a win for members of the community that are concerned about those items, because they make loud noises. Or they, um, shoot away from you, which could be potentially dangerous, and it lose control. Uh, and then this would be a win for pet owners, veterans with PTSD, and other people who are concerned about those things. Um, second is, uh, families and neighborhoods can still have safe displays. So, um, purchasing ground-based fire, fireworks that are sold at, that stand intense in Duval. So ground-based fireworks are much safer, quieter, with more control from danger. Uh, this will prevent people from shopping outside the community, or going to reservations and buying something that is much, um, worse and illegal. Uh, so this is a way for those who still want to celebrate safety. Uh, the next is that nonprofit groups that operate fireworks locations, great sites in the city that have financial benefit, that would be a fundraiser. So often, this is a primary fundraiser for many of the community-based groups, um, such as Geek, or, uh, clubs, high school athletic groups, churches, and, um, other nonprofit organizations. So this will be a win to the nonprofit groups, um, and the whole community, um, who benefit from the money that's earned, I think. And then, uh, finally, the, the cities, uh, or the city will benefit as well because of the tax for revenue, um, that will come in from the sales. Uh, and then also, um, this modified ban has already been adopted in, in many cities, um, that were previously banned, and in human touch, well, uh, and, um, they've actually reported less complaints, firework-related fires, fires, and overall satisfaction from the council, um, to the fire department and to the police department. So it's a win for all the, um, public service.
Thirty seconds.
Um, municipalities in Washington are realizing that complete bans may not solve concerns for, um, being in the first place. Uh, because of reservations, there's always gonna be fireworks in Washington, uh, and so ground-based fireworks is a great way, um, to prevent those legal fireworks coming in, still be safe. And other communities, um, have adopted this, like Auburn, McCallum, Pasco, Monmouth, and Chuffula, and the entire state of Oregon.
Time.
Thank you.
All right, um, so now moving on to the general twenty-four dash, we created Toll Brothers commercial application extension request, they've got bridge phase one and two, uh, Director Thomas.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Homsola. And so I just have the illustration up here, uh, that shows the lots that we're looking at for Toll Brothers. When Aaron Hall Murray, the, uh, from Toll Brothers, the vice president, uh, came and talked to you earlier this evening about a possible extension to, uh, bring an application for commercial development. We received the request pretty late last week. I talked to our city administrator, and, uh, we did prepare it for the council, and we are recommending a six-month extension to allow commercial development application come in with two conditions. The first condition is that they have to bring in a pre-application in ninety days, essentially three months. And then by six months, they need to bring in an application for development, as at least one of the lots. And whether that is Toll Brothers bringing that application, and they really build something, or it would be, um, if they are able to sell their property to a user out there. If there are any questions from council, I can take them.
Councilmember Nancy. I think I should have asked, this was, um, our guest was here earlier, but, um, part of making a project viable is the cost of labor. And, you know, Toll Brothers and their conversation acknowledged that perhaps, uh, their pricing could play with having a viable interest.
I, I don't know, and I can follow up and talk to them about that. I think what makes it challenging is that when this project started a long time ago, that they chose to provide residential development on the north side of Third Avenue, and then all of the commercial development would happen on the south side, and the agreement says that they have to build, it's just over fifty thousand square feet, a commercial, and there's five lots of them. So that's what's triggering the two, uh, commercial re. So that's what's triggering the two, uh, commercial retail office base. And so that is a challenge for them.
So it's not just, it's that that type of design to create that much square footage.
That's, yeah, my understanding is that is the greater challenge, but we also have, and I think um, often they ask this question about um, that there are still covenants that don't allow certain uses and that it still has about four years, well, three years before that expires. So that is one of the other challenges of development of the site in general as well.
All right. Um, I apologize. I was supposed to make a, ask for a motion at nine o'clock, um, to extend the meeting, so council would like to make a motion.
I'm going to have to accept it.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Sorry about that interruption. Um, all right. Uh, any other questions, uh, Mayor Portem and then Councilmember Coobell?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I think where I struggle with this and, and I spoke to it a bit, um, when the Toll Brothers representative was here, is there's different categories of marketing and all of them can be considered actively marketing. Um, and like over the past five years at least, I have been very on top of seeing what is available and, and for my own reasons, but it just wasn't on the map at all. Um, so I thought maybe it was more of a niche marketing kind of thing, looking for certain, and maybe it was because of some of those challenges of the property or they were just going for a certain thing. So I think that's where I struggled with it. That being said, I can live with this extension, but I would not consider anything past this. Um, again, so I hope that that if others feel similarly, that would be made clear that this is really it and they need to get it done.
Councilmember Coobell?
And, and my question is along that line, what, what happens at the end of six months? If we've got focus.
Uh, we will come back for a discussion with the city council. And so that first deadline will be in three months.
Um, Councilmember Isaacson and then Shaker.
From your experience with them, I mean, I mean, as a citizen driving, as a pure driver, I didn't even know that was supposed to be commercial if I wasn't in the parlance council, so it's, uh, even evident when you drive, there's no big sign saying commercial property for sale or anything. So that's why I asked the question, when did you start using this other company to advertise it? My question to you is, what's your perception of have they really been spiritually engaged in pardon English, give a crap about developing the commercial side of this as opposed to the residential, because they did a hell of a good job of the residential side. Whenever they all had problems during COVID. So what's your candid opinion on, did they really even try?
I will be short and sweet. I think their focus was on the residential development and not on.
Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I, I think kind of down the line. They made their money on the residential and the part, the reason you package these development agreements together is that you kind of know that maybe one portion might have to somewhat subsidize the commercial. And yet it feels like in this situation, you know, they made all their money on the residential, now they have this commercial that they still potentially want market rate and they want someone else to take the risk of building it. And it just, it for so many reasons, it's just set up to fail. Because there's no acknowledgement that part of the money you made on the residential should help fund the building of the commercial and that has been completely separated. That's not happening.
All right, Councilmember Mercer, and then.
Yeah, this may relate, you might hit with what I was gonna say, and I think we're all sort of singing the same song, is uh, even the, the, I think the comments that you just made about the two stories and he referenced it. They knew that at the time they did the slot. Right, because they, all those constraints are the same constraints that they agreed to. And so to me, again, that doesn't, yes, it is more challenging, but you knew that when you decided to, to, to concentrate and real estate uh, residential um, investments, because you knew it'd be easier to build on that side. Um, and this is just sort of just the uh, uh, the, the bill of coming due in terms of, of making through. So like, um, the mayor for government, I, I can live with this, we've had this, we've seen this with other developments where we've granted a one extension, but it's been clear like this is it, no more after this. And so, you know, on, on those conditions, I could it sounds like there are some potential, um, I know, but it's been discussed for a while, but you know, that, that there are some viable options and we'll give them that, but then beyond that, that's sort of
I'm hearing consent, oh, go ahead. Um, I would like to say that Director Thomas has done a very nice job and helps her council support too. Can't prevent what happened in the past, this project is old. But we can make revisions to our municipal code that requires that commercial and residential be so that we're not in this.
Um, one more, Councilmember Napland, and then I'm going to ask them a motion.
And I need a little more from today. You've made some comment about what happens after the six months. So I heard that the six month requirement was just one application. We are not letting go of the rest of the requirement, which means all of them.
The whole thing is to be built, right? So under the development agreement, it requires one application to come in five years after the first phase final plan. And the development agreement has expired. And so while there is still the city's intent for that to happen and for Toll Brothers to make sure that it does happen. I'm not sure if we'll be able to get up to fifty five thousand square feet. I think that we will be able to get one going there through the application.
So I guess what I hear that they have to turn in an application, it would be to build off of the thing, but you're saying that they could divide it into as many properties as they want and just bring in one application.
It is currently five parcels, so they need to bring an application for one.
Um, Councilmember Shaker, then we'll ask, uh, all in here to motion.
Uh, my question, I guess, is after the six months, assuming that they're bringing in a fun application. What's the next development agreement that we're, we're running the other four parts of it? Can they just settle on that or is there, will it be a kind of, sort of, that?
The development agreement only requires them to bring in one application for a lot.
So, um, would, I'm sorry, this is asking some should we put in more, for this extension, should we put in more strength? Or instead of just one, perhaps, so they come in with, with, with two. I'm concerned that they'll focus on one and then basically wash their hands of it. And the other parties will set there for an extended period of time.
The development agreement only requires one application to come in.
So if we don't extend the development agreement, can we come up with a new development agreement?
The development agreement expired this year.
Right.
So all we have is our commitment in their development agreement amendment to bring in one commercial development application in the commercial area. By, within five years of the first phase final plan. That deadline is next week.
Right. And then, so if we don't extend this, uh, we'll hit that deadline. Will that require a new development agreement or what would be the consequences if we don't extend this?
There would not be a new development agreement per se unless we request that of Toll Brothers. And so we will go back and talk um, with our city attorney as well to get a little bit more direction. So I'd like to stay tuned on that particular subject.
Um, so we've had, um, everybody's had the opportunity for two questions. Councilmember Supple, I haven't heard from you, so just, um, just want to double check.
All right, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, would Councilmember like to make a motion?
Motion.
Go ahead.
Um, I would like to, um, suspend, ask council to suspend the procedures in five point six. Require additional review and finalize this item at this meeting. And prove this part of the consent agenda for the eight six month submission one time. They'll do it.
We've.
It has been painful.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Uh, Councilmember Isaacs and Napland and then Shaker.
Can we amend it to hit them with a fee if they don't do it or mandate that they, I mean, where's, what's, where's the punishment other than six months if they don't do it? Do we get the property? I mean, what's, where's the can we, since we're making a motion to help them, can there be some penalty if they don't uphold their end there? Can we get money out? Can we?
Go ahead, city administrator.
Um, we need to spend time reviewing with our city attorney what a breach of contract claim might look like, but with the development agreement being expired, it will require a fairly indepth legal review of what we have available as tools.
Okay, so the same one to list.
Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I, I was wanting to have more understanding about where we sit legally with potential consequences of the current expiration. Um, and then extending it, that lessening our ability to have a consequence, because now we've created kind of a a different agreement. Does that make sense? I, I, I'm worrying we're
we don't know at the moment if we actually do have a consequence that we could administer, given the expiration of the development agreement absent, uh, expending legal fees on the breach of contract.
So is it possible to maybe get more information if it's already expired, just wait to find out that until the next meeting?
Well, the, their application period is, what I, Director Thomas, is next week. So, um, if we don't have an answer to them next week and they don't file, we are largely acquiescing to that failure to meet the deadline because we will not have prepared a contract claim that we could exercise in a matter of a week.
Just clarify with this, they'd be in default, but we've then essentially allowed them to bring default versus operating as if they're not in default because they're still within that timeframe and extending the contract. Thanks, Karen. Thank you.
Councilmember Shaker?
Uh, my, my concern is that the extent is, uh, we're gonna find ourselves in even a worse situation, uh, assuming they do bring in a, uh, an application, uh, for at least one of the persons, or, or a part of one of the parties. Uh, and, uh, then they have no obligation to market the properties, the remaining properties are booked after that. That's my understanding of this. Uh, so, uh, so I would not be in favor of a sentence.
Uh, yeah, this is far outside my comfort level, our level of law, city attorney, and luckily we have those retained for us. Um, I would say right now though, on anything other than bringing in an application for one property, they do have a requirement to do it anyway.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote on this one because it looks very clear that we're gonna have division.
This is my first time doing.
I'll need bounce for that.
Okay, do I just need to go around?
Yes.
Well, okay.
And then Kelsey, before you do that first, can you just, uh, take that off so that we can see the virtual one?
Yes.
Our vacation question, um, you read this and I didn't see the last part of revision, or the consent agenda, does that mean I'm just?
Like, that was my typo that said consent.
Okay. Okay, so it would be, I, I think a, a successful revision could be, a motion could be owed to approve an extension of the, um, of the deadline next week.
It was actually down at the bottom. There were two, maybe she's done there.
Yeah, it was confusing.
Do you want to make a motion?
Uh, can I amend my motion?
Yes. Um, are there any objections to Councilwoman Coobell amending her motion? Okay, okay, so I think we're.
At the very end of the agenda.
It's going to be very bottom there. All right, and.
Oh, there we go, okay.
Donald, when you're ready?
Oh, she, she had to do the minimum first.
After you. Uh, staff recommends one six month extension with the condition that a pre-application must be submitted within ninety days, and a development application must be submitted within six months, which would be April twenty first, twenty twenty five. By Toll Brothers or a purchaser of one of five parcels.
Is there a second on that amendment?
Sure.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All those opposed, and men and women, please say no.
No.
Okay, uh, for the record, Councilmember Napland, but no on the other.
I, I just wanted to clarify what we're, but we're, we're going on.
On the event, it changes it from consented to.
Oh, okay.
Right now. Um, Councilmember Shaker, do you want to register your vote?
Uh, ye- yes, yay, I'm, I'm on.
Great, so it was six ayes, one no. All right, um, now we'll do the roll call, um, the underlying motion.
Mayor Portem?
I.
Mr. Isaacson?
Abstain.
Mr. Shaker?
Nay.
Uh, Mr. Supple?
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Mercer?
Aye.
Mr. Supple?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Napland?
Abstain.
Ms. Coofill?
Aye.
Great, um, motion passes and, um, I did have a quick question for the city attorney. Uh, on extensions, do folks need to declare why they're abstaining from the vote?
My, my understanding is no, you don't have to explain an abstention. Different cities have different rules for how an abstention is actually treated, but as I heard that roll call, it sounds like there were four ayes and so, um, uh,
The motion.
What I heard, the motion passes.
Yep. All right, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to our last page in the business, consideration of the rights for revising fireworks section of municipal, Duval municipal.
Okay, well, last item. Um, quick slide just to offer context about what you have in your council packet. And we can go to the next slide. So what you have in your council packet are two sets of revisions, but ultimately there are three options that are in the packet and I'll explain what those are. So there is one set of revisions that are, is, uh, offers a full ban on any type of fireworks in the city of Duval, um, uh, along with a, an affecting ordinance, both have been reviewed by city council or city attorney. Um, the full ban is modeled after the recent full bans that occurred in Mercer Island and Gekarver, so those revisions are consistent with, um, the recent full bans in those two jurisdictions, both which have occurred in the last two years. The partial ban revision to five point ten is a mix of, um, as written, a mix of the municipal code provisions in Babel and St. Paul, St. Pauli, both of which allow some fireworks, um, largely ground fireworks and sparklers. Um, the partial ban revision that is in the packet takes the Babel approach, which is more restrictive than St. Pauli in terms of which fireworks are allowed. And then the flyer that was included in St. Pauli was at the request of Mayor Portem. She wanted to see something that you might use, um, to describe what a partial ban looks like. So as a medicine example. you might use um to describe what a partial ban looks like, so it's meant as an example, but the example actually communicates um that third approach, which is the city of St. Pauli allows uh additional types of ground fireworks in Baffle. So we wanted to take the approach that for of St. Pauli, which includes all the things on that flyer, it adds a few more things like that ground fat fountains that Baffle doesn't, so there are really three approaches here for council to consider in the packet. And with that, um, open to any questions, um, this is an effort of you know, four or five months of beginning the conversation around fireworks, communicating with the community, bringing back community feedback, and then at council's request, offering a package of revision for you all to consider. And um, I believe the mayor earlier today, there was a question on um some of the revisions that was improvised to the attorney, and so that's uh where I'm at in terms of uh doing the work to prepare council for making a decision.
And before we begin discussion, um, you know, we've heard a lot about these revised fireworks, and I just would like to offer the chief an opportunity to provide his perspective from law enforcement, um, because that is one of the big issues that we're working to address here.
So I come from the city of Baffle, and prior to submitting the fireworks ordinance in town, uh, it was pretty active for us, uh, we've had actually four or five people out, the supervisor, sometimes the chief would come out to work fires or fireworks emphasis uh on the Fourth of July. Since the ordinance in Baffle was changed, it was very restrictive, as you know, it didn't include those ground fountains. But we also changed the ordinance that we didn't allow for any uh sale or distribution in the city. Um, and that uh truly really reduced our efforts out there, uh, we're in the city of Baffle, we still have people out, but we no longer have a dedicated group of people out there um enforcing fireworks laws. Um, it is, in my perspective, um and this is kind of a personal opinion, but also an opinion regarding a lot of law enforcement. It's really easy to enforce a total ban versus a partial ban, um, but um our role is to uh take whatever action is deemed by the council or the legislative authority to do so. Um, it does make it a lot cleaner not having to worry about, is that legal, is that not legal, is that legal, is not? And the Joe uh citizen and the public don't know that determination. Uh, if it's fireworks, they call. Um, they don't check to see, hey, is that uh legal, is that not legal? Uh, they still call us, so that's why it makes it a little bit easier, this is very cut and dried, uh, to the point, but whichever decision uh the council must throw with, we'll move forward and take whatever action we.
Uh, city administrator, ma'am?
I should add one um piece that um I did preserve from St. Pauli that's different than Baffle, is having heard from the community and from council, an interest in um allowing for the sale, that is a departure from Baffle, so the partial ban revision is a true combination of Baffle and St. Pauli, meaning we didn't take the Baffle approach of only allowing certain things and also banning the sale. This is a combined approach where you can have a civic club um, or any nonprofit sale, so preserving that, but uh restricting the type of sale to those that are involved, but you know, it's a mix or match approach, I mean, you can, council can decide to take whatever action.
And I would be speculating, because we didn't have a um a partial ban and the ability to sell fireworks at the same time, but I would uh I would probably guess to say that, well, one of the reasons why our polls went down drastically was because we prohibited the sale. Um, so I don't know what type of having a partial ability to have partial sale sale might impact, so.
Great, and councilmember Merson?
I had sort of a clarifying question, and and we obviously heard from from all different sides in terms of the pros and cons. This obviously addresses a lot of, some in the fire, not all the fire, because some of you still admit, you know, uh uh, the archery component, which has been a uh an issue from a trauma perspective, both animals and 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 people. Uh, I did want to just clarify, you know, in terms of there's nothing in this proposed sort of hybrid approach that would prohibit the declaring an emergency based on conditions, because we we had the initial, then we had to reextended it to provide more discretion uh based on fire conditions, that would still be in place even with the spinners, because they obviously could still ignite dry grass or other things of that sort.
Yes, so I preserved that part of the existing case for good.
But I I thought I wanted, I just wanted to double check the the.
But um, but I I would note that even the hospital, um, it's still a significant body of work um, at a very busy time uh for all of city staff. And um, that's, it takes a significant amount of resources and the timeline to educate the public is still really not enough. Uh, so it it continues to add a layer of complexity and um use of staff resources to say what otherwise would be unnecessary. Um, councilmember Isaacson and then Mayor Portem?
Um. It's hard, and I think since it has some doubt feeling, has pride, a criticism, and we're trying to get a program. My sense of this holding, I think I was, maybe I got a good job, I was a little bit, I asked to leave on some of these discussions, but I don't think that's, that's my fault, uh, but I my sense is there was a decision that we're gonna change somehow or another, no matter what our citizens say. And we tried to do a survey and remember a discussion about it was invalidated or something, so we kind of didn't really want to listen to it, but there was a lot of people that didn't want to ban, and a lot of people that did, and it almost was like, almost right down the middle, if I remember correctly. So I think we're trying to get a compromise, but I don't think we're doing everyone a good service this way, I mean it as, we're not giving our citizens the ability to have a place maybe, or a ability to actually shoot fireworks in a way that they enjoy it, some of you really like fireworks. I don't think it is, and like, you know, it's there, it's just, and it's, they're gonna feel like it's just kind of a reach from their government. And I don't feel like there are really, it just feels like the intent of this was to ban it or restrict it, no matter what our citizens said, that's how a few of us went. Uh, and that's so, I just wish there was better way of doing this, and I mentioned something to Mayor Portem at one point, like you know, we can keep the fires a part of it, I agree with that, but why don't we let people vote on it? That they want, I know, you know, they like that sometimes, because they cost money, but it's like all there are people that say, maybe each year, but when they're general about every year, you vote yes or no, and they're like, our citizens, that, do you want fireworks or not? We can change every year, but I just, I'm just not a pro power approaches, I don't think our citizens, they're not like.
So I would note that um fireworks for any changes, it has to be a year in advance, so so many votes one year, it's gonna be two years before that pays effect. The other thing I would note is that um the survey data was skewing heavily in favor of banning fireworks until a member of um an elected body reached out to a community member who was pro fireworks and asked that community's member to repost our survey that the city had posted multiple times through our PIO, and ask people to contact the city and tell them not to ban fireworks, and within a seventy-two hour period, the vote total changed to being almost at even. So it was a manipulation of the community that changed those results.
I'd motion to disagree, I mean, our, we're citizens, as a city council, we represent our citizens, and we should, if we don't think that everyone's seeing it, it's not a good sample size, then we should give it out to more people.
We, it was a significant sample size, but the point is that the city put out a neutral, kind of take our survey. We had a member of this body reach out to a member of the community uninited and asked that person to say on a public group that our survey had been posted to numerous times to ask that person to post it and ask people to contact the city to not ban the fire, or to not ban the fireworks, it was skewed. And it was, it really shifted the results, and the city administrator saw that in the survey.
But it's like citizens telling us what they want, it doesn't matter.
But it it does matter how it's skewed, because the whole point of the survey was to have an unbiased perspective, and that was taken away from the community and the city council by those actions.
I don't think everyone would, I disagree.
Well, either way, um, in the last council meeting, the survey results were published, it just pure data without any reference to how the votes were, so you have a motion.
Councilmember Napland?
I think that there's a a reference to me that's being unsaid, and I don't know where you came up with your facts or assumptions of how this happened or what happened. Um, so I guess I'll say what happened. I reached out to quite a few people who interest, have interest in fireworks on both sides. And at the time that I reached out, it was before we had a survey, and there wasn't a plan for a survey, and you know, there was no plan for a survey, so I had a conversation, and this person said, oh, I should just put a survey up, um, and see. Did you just say that I was lying, that you spoke? That's so disrespectful.
I'm sorry, councilmember Napland.
Because I'm motioning, if you didn't, I hear you just call a councilmember liar. Didn't you just call the councilman a liar?
You know what, I apologize, I did, because I had a conversation with an individual that talk, that actually, you know, I will take this offline, but there are bigger issues at hand here.
No, there's not, I will tell you exactly what happened, and I have emails to show it, I spoke to this person. It was before any survey had been released whatsoever, okay? And he was like, oh, I should do that, because I, you know, it would be really interesting to see, you know, how this would go, and I was like, yeah, that would be interesting. There was no survey planned at that time. So then, later on, I saw we put a survey out, and I was like, oh, I should let him know, the city ended up posting a survey, we have a survey going. And so you can see, I didn't speak to him again, all I did was forward it to him and say, hey, we have a survey. That's all I did, he took it to himself to decide to write a post that way and post it, it was not prompted by me. It was not prompted by me, he chose to do that, and either way, I I think it's absolutely absurd that I would be told that as a council member who has been elected to represent the people of Duval, that I am my role is to try to connect people with decisions being made that matter to them. And that is what I did. And I don't think it is fair that you are calling me a liar to our city administrator
I mean.
on recording, it's it's unfair and absurd.
Councilmember Napland, I apologize.
I would like to know, um, uh, from our attorney, did I break the law, did I do something incorrect?
No one's accusing you of breaking the law, councilmember Napland, so like, as I suggested, this conversation should go online at this point.
Well, online, you called me a liar.
And I apologize. Nothing more I can say at this point, so. But the bottom line is, the results were skewed, and that is what the city administrator did talk about previously.
I think that's your opinion, Mayor, that the results were skewed, citizens of this city voted. The information, how it gets there is not skewed, because a citizen who's on city council, that's what we're supposed to do. We go out to our citizens, say, this is what your city council and your city staff is doing. Make sure your voice is heard. If we don't think our citizens' voice are being heard, it's our job to go talk to them. And say, there's a survey being done, that's gonna take one of your rights and benefits on it.
I'm gonna try and get us back on track to the discussion of the ordinances.
Um, so, here's what I would say, um members of the community came to council and asked council to consider the issue of fireworks. Council approved a community engagement strategy that involves, um, let's see, I went to two farmers markets, I went to council chat, summer stage, we had post parts at city hall, we did a survey, we collected a comment, collected emails, all of which have been provided to council, all of the community feedback that we have solicited has been provided to council. At this point, it's up to council to decide whether or not you want to even take up the issue of fireworks, I mean, we've talked about it for a long time, that there was an interest in doing so, so now I think what is needed is for you all to decide what kind of initiative, um, or what kind of changes, if any. So I guess there's a fourth option too, which is you all can decide not to do anything with fireworks beyond what has already been done. I would say, though, that members of the community asked this body to consider the issue of fireworks, and we've spent five months asking the community in a variety of ways what they want to do on the issue of fireworks.
Um, the call around, and so uh sort of come, so, um, I think the the one other thing, I don't know if everyone's here to, to look at how, and you know, again, appreciate city administrators putting together and the here's the question, I think the one thing that struck me from that exercise, you know, and we could do this any number of ways, you know, we we tended to take the whole, it wasn't scientifically, there were controls to make sure people didn't vote multiple times and and various things, but you know, again, taking all the inputs. For me, the most relevant was, you know, the turnout we had, the cow was pretty much people that represented the fireworks industry, like the businesses. It wasn't, there wasn't a lot of feedback from the community either way, like, I think you, we expected, there were spoons, there was cookies, there was all kinds of things, and we got a handful of people, of which almost all of them had I'm not even gonna say a vested interest, because it was from a, you know, the 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 charitable and the contributions back to the city, but it was essentially the reps and then a few people from the uh, uh, organization that that sort of uses it for 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 fundraising, and and so for me, that actually indicated that, um I know a lot of these issues are top of mind in the moment, Fourth of July coming to go, um I I struggle because the I put more weight, I guess, on the folks that experience, whether it's, and and experienced this myself, I mean, animal that has trauma, having you know, there's there's visceral happen fire, I'm gonna put the weight on the safety side, that said, I don't in any way minimize the the benefits of tradition, now, if we didn't have a carnation fireworks show, there were lots of other ways to get that. Well, it's not quite the same thing, I think, where the city administrator is expected to go is for that demographic, the younger children, the the, not necessarily your teenagers or your adults that just want to drink and buy fireworks and do things as a tradition, but the kids, you know, that have really made a difference, they still have an option, based on the spot for which the spinners and you kind of attempted, but I don't put as much weight for the folks who want to buy that throwing candles, because they're still gonna go to the reservation, they're they're still gonna buy, you know, that that's a little harder, but but I think as a council, there's an action that we're taking, as our responsibility, just keep the community safe and create a, you know, safe place, but that that's where I'm gonna sort of put my weight, and I I was kind of leaning toward the 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 compromise, I would say, when this happening, you know, and and but but even then, you know, there was trade-offs in terms of the chief says, it really doesn't create less work for the police department, because they still so my my takeaway is you're never, it's not a great solution, I don't think not doing anything, though, is an option either, so I would sort of put that back on the council, I think we do need to make a recommendation, otherwise, we're gonna have the same conversation a year from now, a year from after that, um, that we do need to sort of, even if the straw hold a kind of put where we are on that on the issue.
Mayor Portem?
Yeah, I, this conversation is just tough all around, um, everything else aside, um, but, um I think, you know, money be responsible to the community and what we've heard over the years. And I think it is pretty close to a split, honestly, and that's why it's tough, and I think it'll always flux one way or another. There's also a healthy percentage of people who are like, eh, whatever, I mean, because I've heard that a lot, you know, one way or another, they wouldn't care if they're banned, and they wouldn't care if they keep going, um there's literally every possible opinion on this, and I lean toward the one that yeah, not everybody's fully happy, you know, um, and I think for me, listening to, there's the fundraising component, um, which now is civic club, before it was the Rotary, there will always be somebody, also, I I don't believe that that's the end all be all, but if this wasn't a fundraising option, there are other fundraising options too, so I'm not, I'm just kind of listing out all the things I've heard, um, I've heard the sense of community, which I think can be achieved with these less crazy or safe and sane is probably the better um terminology, um, the little fountains, the um sparklers, spinners, and having an option to buy them in Duval, um, also, hopefully. And having an option to buy them in Duval. Um also, hopefully it decreases the amount that people will accidentally buy something. That's not allowed here if they're buying it somewhere else. Um. And I think there have been areas that have fully banned them. In fact, councilmember, sorry, I think it mentioned to me. Uh was it this year LA that tried to ban them or just like it was crazy like, yeah, that's not gonna happen. Um so but I mean, I I can assume so a lot of people, most people in Duval are responsible and are relatively safe. I would like to at most take away things that are not safe. Because they rely on so many factors to remain safe, like anything aerial, anything with sparks. Um not just talking about, not talking about fountains, but I mean, some of them really have embers that drift down. So taking away those things, I think would mitigate hopefully most of the biggest fire and safety dangers. Um but of course, it's not a hundred percent. Some of these little things can still really hurt somebody or start a fire. So um. It's not, there's no perfect solution here. Nobody's gonna be happy with whatever's decided, but um I'll step off my soapbox in a second. But I guess like where I've landed is there are communities that had it strongly ingrained in their community that this is an important. Thing that they like to do. Um and they've kept some of them legal so that they still have that option. But yeah, it's not the big booms they're used to. But I also think having our own community fireworks display. Paired with something like this would greatly reduce um the people still doing that in their cul-de-sac. Or in their street or in their driveway. I feel like a lot of people would start gravitating toward the big professional display and we would see it go down even more. So that's where I'm at is some kind of modified. I I wanna go through a little more carefully, so I'm hoping nobody's like. Set on making a decision tonight. Maybe we can kind of figure out what direction we're doing at least and then look at it at the next agenda. But I'm looking at more of a modified ban.
Councilmember Shaker.
First question, question, uh the results of survey data. I thought I saw that in favor of banning fireworks. Uh. Was that not the case?
It is. Yeah. So ultimately, um when we, I can't remember. It's probably about a weekend, half a week now, probably two weeks when I pulled all the survey data and put it in the council packet, it was. Fifty-five, forty-five, and I'll say the community interaction was fifty-five, forty-five. The comments have been fifty-five, forty-five is a true split. Fifty-five being in favor of a full ban. Um we did though ask community and there was, I think, I I won't say sizable, but a good amount of people said, well. What about a middle approach? And so that's, you know, at one point I come back to council and said. Would you all like me to prepare a middle approach when you consider this? So it's not a full ban. Or nothing, that there was some little ground. Cause we did hear me say, well, I'd be okay if it wasn't. The loud noises, the wildfire danger, um something smaller. So that's the direction I took.
Okay, oh, good. No, thank you. And and. Okay. Uh we we're late. Are we voting on something tonight? I didn't seem to.
You don't have to. This is.
I did not, I did not prepare an agenda bill because I I think rightly assumed. That council would not be prepared to vote on the agenda bill tonight. And because there really are multiple approaches in the way I wrote this. So what I was hoping is that I can take a temperature of council and then at the next meeting. Prepare the thing that you want to see um for a vote or again. You know, I'm I'm serving in the direction of what I've heard council wanted me to do for the.
Okay, now can I comment? I know I have two questions now. Okay, thanks. Uh my 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 comment is, uh as a council, we are responsible for. Public health uh and safety in in the city. Uh fireworks uh contribute to a less safe uh environment. Uh not only for people, but for pets and let's not forget wild animals that that go, you know, go totally berserk. With fireworks, they don't know how to handle it. They don't know how to interpret it uh at at all. Uh. I personally believe uh based on the survey results, based on myself talking. With a a number of people, a you know, a middle ground approach would make sense. As I think Cynthia prepared and I think that's what we saw in our in our packet. Uh and the middle ground approach that I would prefer is modeling it. Slightly more scripted after bottle with the caveat that we will continue to allow sale of those fireworks. Uh only those approved fireworks here in Duval. And I believe. That's what you have in in the in the pack.
Yes. So in the packet is the more restrictive. Thoughtful approach, but allowing the same likes of.
It's uh, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Natalie.
So just thinking through this, I I think no one is going to be happy. I think we all acknowledge that this is going to make. Both sides fairly unhappy. But I do think that there probably are quite a few people that can tolerate this middle ground. And the middle ground is better than, you know, it being completely opposite of what their preference is. So I I'm willing to work in this middle ground to serve, I don't know, what I'm hearing. And for me, I I think limiting it only to a little thing that you like, that lets off some smoke in a sparkler. That is not gonna feel like a middle ground to the vast majority of people. That would be, it's there would be no viable market. For a nonprofit to set up a stand to sell a smoke device. And a sparkler. I I think that that is going too far compared to what we've had. There's such a tradition here in Duval. Of having these Fourth of July celebrations. My family always comes, um we have our celebration at Fourth of July. It just would completely change the holiday for the vast. Um number of people here in Duval. Um I think having. The round fireworks only also means that the majority of people who aren't gonna travel all the way to the reservation. Probably just going to end up with those ones, cause that's what will be available locally. In addition, it's in Palm Springs North Bend, which is an area where people in our community also travel to. If we have a similar. Um or even in my opinion, it would be best to have it on identical um approach of what is allowed. There would just be consistency along the St. Paul Valley. Um I I really feel like um. That's the best approach. Um. And so that's where I would, I I would appreciate to see. An ordinance formulated that would allow. The main fireworks that are allowed in St. Paul and North Bend. And also still allow a sale and then still have the, you know, emergency fireworks banned if the weather was dry. So that's, that's what I would like to see prepared or something you can vote on.
Councilmember Supple, we haven't heard from you.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm. I'm in, I'm in favor of a total ban on fireworks. I think, you know, that's the direction. Um things are headed and this partial ban is just like one, one baby step toward that direction. So I I'd rather just rip the Band-Aid off instead of pulling it off gently or whatever. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Supple. And councilmember Kupel.
I would side, would go in this recycle as well. I mean, might as well just rip the Band-Aid off. And do it, cause we're still gonna have people in the regular law and do what they're gonna do anyway.
So um. Yeah, can I ask kind of go to a point in order? So I wanna make sure that I'm hearing so I can prepare for the next meeting. I'm hearing partial, total, partial, partial. Councilmember Rutter.
Yeah, I mean, I I I'm. Kind of here back and forth, cause it's like you, I'm not being influenced by the others. Um my my my. I guess I was leaning toward a total ban. That said, I'm I'm looking at kids and stuff. I was, I was okay for this. Well, technology, uh councilwoman Supple said, I saw this as a path toward a total ban. I was just doing it sort of for. Couple of years versus at once, just to make it easier, but that's, you know, that's my sort of endgame. I still think longer term. It's gonna happen anyway, based on climate change and other things. It's either gonna happen or just stick up a little bit. Determine we need to do it. It's just a matter of how quickly we get there.
Councilmember Shaker.
Yeah, just to clarify my position, uh although I would support a partial ban, I would prefer a total ban.
That's so neat. So that was. So I think the question, um I'll ask the question a different way. Um if somebody were to bring um a full ban to the council. Who on this council would be supportive of that coming forth? And we heard from councilmember Supple.
Dave, thank you very much.
And that's fine. That's.
I mean, you can you can email some good.
Um looking at, we have actually a little bit of time because we had a meeting on the first. Which moved it a little calendar pretty quickly. So. If you all could let me know by the twenty-eighth, so two, two to do's on the twenty-eighth. Let me know what you would like to see for a um ordinance package on this topic. Um and then the other thing was council priorities by the twenty-eighth. That would give me that to prepare. The work is largely done. It's been reviewed by the city attorney. Um so the full ban ordinance and language has already been reviewed by the city attorney, so that's ready and prepared. We would need to make minor modifications to the. The partial ban depending on which way council wants to go, whether it's the thoughtful approach or the stone approach.
Great. Uh councilmember Isaacson.
Just going out here. Yeah, like I said, there is no little groundness. It's something like to say, people who want to shoot fireworks are demonized in this whole conversation. You know, we're hurting people's animals. Trust me, animals get nuts when it happens. This fire, especially you're having a hard time getting to sleep and I have to go work early, that's why I'm stressing that. But I think it's a bad, not a good, it's where they're on them, kind of swallowing, accepting. We are, I still feel like we're not, we're gonna hurt some people to say, well, we're gonna throw that page, so this is too bad. We're completely wearing whole half our. Civilization, like a city who values that because we think this is the better way. There's still no middle ground. I mean, can we not set it up where people can go down to Forest Park? You know, if we're afraid afraid of setting someone's house on fire, that's the justification of it. Then I'll get out from the corner park and say, hey, you can come shoot fireworks down here from whatever time, whatever time. But you know, that's sort of, you know, scare someone's pets. I'm not marginalizing that, but. You know, we're we're taking the subject. And it's basically even as people who want to do fireworks. Uh and aren't valuing what it means to know equally to. What we're seeing is harming the the other people in our society. That's why this whole thing needed to feel like it's not right for our citizens. It was like, we're gonna do something. We're gonna be banned or we're gonna reduce it. We didn't let our systems truly let us know what they want. I mean, as I said, that they, we don't do it right. Same forty-five, fifty-five, but it's not a good sample size. I might vote for any ban whatsoever, but I don't think we've done a good job of seeing where our systems are.
Mayor Burton.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify just things about some conversations around this that. For me, the partial is not a baby step or a full ban. That I really think it could be a potential solution for the community where it's so tossed up. I mean, we could pass a full ban and then a council next year or the year after can totally reverse it. You know, it's not set in stone unless we do it. So um you know, I I for me, like this is a potential good compromise for the community. And also that it mitigates hopefully most of the worst safety and fires. But most of it. So I just wanna clarify, I didn't see it as a mid step to a whole ban.
With that, um so there's no further business, so I'll give the last objection. We are in.